This Board of Selectmen meeting to order can have an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Do we have any walk-ins this evening? How are you doing? Just for everybody, just your name and address, obviously, everybody knows you, but...
I don't think that's true. Donna Bangard, 108 Captain Pierce Road. I have come this evening to give you an update on Ship Shape Day. As you may know, we're celebrating 50 years of this annual town cleanup this year. And so 50 years ago, 1967, Ship Shape Day was organized then as it is now by the Beautification Commission, which was newly formed organization. It had no funding except donations. And so people were asked to provide their own bags for the cleanup and to bring a couple extra bags for the next person. The trash bags were picked up by residents who volunteered the use of their truck, where there's a notation in some old financial records that Roger Damon and Ray Litchfield offered their pickup trucks for three hours each on Saturday to pick up the trash bags at a value of $72. The, another really strong supporter of Ship Shape Day was Paul Young, who had a towing service, and today there's still a garage. He, that first year, donated $870 to Ship Shape Day. That was $15 each for 58 cars towed. So I can't imagine what it looked like to have 58 disabled vehicles. I don't quite understand where that came from. He supported Ship Shape Day for years after that by various amounts for cars towed around town. What must it have looked like? The cleanup used to be focused on the harbor area because of all the sand from winter ice, and so sweeping up was a big deal. And in the merchants, youth groups were the focus of the cleanup effort in those days. In the 1980s, in fact, the Beautification Commission purchased push brooms and gave them to all the merchants to urge them to keep the commercial area looking clean and tidy. The banner was purchased in 1995, and that's why it says cleanup, pick up, sweep up from those early years. Today, by contrast, the bags and gloves are supplied by Beautification Commission. The bags, of course, are picked up by the DPW. However, it may take them three days to a week to collect them all, and they typically have between 10 and 15 tons of trash and litter that they turn in to transfer station. A big contrast is that 1967 effort. Instead of a one-day event, we now encourage people to do it either Saturday or Sunday. And I think that has brought a lot more people out to support our cleanup. Recycling is encouraged. Recycling wasn't even on the radar too much in 1967. So beautification has always waged a war against litter. The records show that many payments have, there've always been many payments for anti-litter posters. But litter has changed. There used to be more smoking-related trash, discarded tires, a lot more glass. Nowadays, we find a predominance of plastic bags, of fast food and beverage containers, and lottery tickets. One thing that has not changed, however, the beer and beverage cans that we still find have always been there, and nip bottles. I was amazed to find a comment in the 70s about the number of nip bottles. And they're still prolific. The winter storms dictate how much debris will be found on the beaches and coastal wetlands, and of course, that is something that has increased in recent years. So April 29th this year is going to be Ship Shape Day. In the lead-up to this event, which we want to commemorate the involvement of the community for 50 years, their support of this cleanup. So we have organized poster contests in all the schools, grades K through 8. There'll be a winner in each class. In the high school, there'll be a first, second, and a third prize cash award. In the elementarys, the other grades will have gift certificates. The winners, winning posters will be posted here and hung in here in Town Hall for the lead-up to Ship Shape Day. So I'm real excited to see what our creative children can come up with. As always, we're giving out supplies at Town Hall between 8:00 and 1:00. We'll have grabbers for rent. And we are also going to be distributing wristlets, wristbands for the Ship Shape Day, commemorating the 50th anniversary. We'll have coffee and donuts beginning at 8:00. And at 11:00, Nona's Ice Cream Truck will show up. And if somebody comes at 8:00 and gets a wristband and wants to come back for ice cream, that will be great. We encourage that. As always, though, cleanup can be performed by any time between Saturday and Monday morning. And the bags can be left along the street in convenient places as long as a truck can get to them. We're offering community service hours for students who want to participate. And the last important piece of information is that we have a website, info@shipshapeday... Well, the website is shipshapeday.info. And if you want to ask a question, our email is help@shipshapeday.info. So we hope to see you all there. Come and get an ice cream.
Thank you again, Donna, for all your organization. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
You're on the 29th.
Yes.
And I think you're getting $1,000 more in your budget, so...
Gotta pay for that Nona's Ice Cream.
Exactly.
Tom McCusker, 50 Janet Pastelane. It's somewhat to do with cleanup and stuff, but it's something that's been bothering me for a few years, and it's like the condition on coming down Henry Turney Bailey Road, just from the trees that have fallen in storms in the last couple of years. But the main thing is the sign that the Chamber of Commerce has up, they talked about replacing it years ago. What I would like to have done now is either from the board to request that the Chamber either refurbish the sign, put a new sign up, or take it down. Because it really is a disgrace now, this metal hanging off all over the place at the main entranceway to the town. So it's just more venting in my path, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And I just think something really should be done, that whole area there. There's a big divot from a plow that happened probably three years ago. It just fills up like a lake. They dump like wood chips there, and it stays there in piles for weeks or months, and then somebody comes in and spreads it out, if that's what you want to call it. But the sign is the main...
Right. It's an ice word.
That's my piece.
And we drive by without even realizing.
It's a good spot, too, for, I don't think beautification does anything up there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that, the Chamber still maintaining that? You guys would know.
They're all on the sign.
All right.
Yeah, they've had some plans, Tom, to try to take the sign and use it for the businesses. You know, for all the various businesses locally, if you're part of the Chamber, you'd pay to put it up there for a billboard to try to encourage things. Then I actually spoke with the Chamber President last week, because somebody had asked about it. It's kind of fortuitous that you raised it tonight. So now they're looking to try to do it like electric sign, because their idea is that if they can generate money, what they'd like to do is then give it back to the town. And if there are things planned for like park benches or different things, whether it's in Cole Parkway or North City, then they would go and they donate the money back to the community. So money that would be raised for the businesses would then go back into the communities. Unfortunately, I think the cost for them to do what they ideally would like to do, it's cost prohibitive right now. The only thing they'd mention, like if there's urgency or emergency, the town could use it as like a public announcement for whatever's happening, storm-related. So, you know, I'll certainly be happy to circle back with them to find out what is their plan. And I think they've had some plans to do something with it. But I have to say, sooner or later, it's got to be acted on, because it's just getting older. Pieces of it are falling down the side.
Yeah, even if they just take it down.
But I don't think they're going to take it down, because once it's down, the billboard is no longer, it's not permitted, it's a non-conformity, it's allowed. So the question is, if they're going to keep it up, then they're going to have to keep it up, but they have to maintain it, because it's an ice word. It's not looking good.
Do you think they want to put up like a promise billboard?
Well, I think that's what you find when you go into Boston around the areas, they're electronic for like signs, because it's a lot easier to maintain instead of having somebody go up and plaster it with whatever the paper or whatever it is. So I mean, I think they're trying to figure out options. And I think there's issues of cost. But at any event, I'll be happy to share that with them. I know that they've tried to work on it. When I was the President of the Board of Chamber of Commerce, six years ago, seven years ago, that was one of the priorities, I said, "Let's get this billboard going," because it's an ice word. Well, you know, it's not easy to try to move things along because of the costs, the volunteer aspect of it, because they're all people who work, so on and on. But I'll be happy to try to figure it, because I mean, it is, it's...
I would like to see it taken down if that's the case, guys. It's just ridiculous, I think.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else at all? Okay, move on to the Report of the Town Administrator.
I put on your desks an updated items pen from the month. Getting any shorter, but just for your own information to review what's going on in your offices. The library anticipates having substantial completion Monday, April 10. There's been a lot of progress made in the building in the last two weeks. Furniture delivery is a week from tomorrow, at which point the library will start to transition from the Citywood Harbor Community Building to the new library. The library at Citywood Harbor Community Building will be closed for three to four weeks. As they get the collection, the collection that's in storage, a lot of which is in this building, and the anticipated opening date of the new library is around June 1st. Before, we can do the move in three weeks, but right now, assuming punch list items and stuff, June 1st. So library will probably be closed for most of May. And Jesse has a whole plan to do that, whatever. But it's going to take a while to move the collection back before they can even start to stack the shelves. The carpeting, the shelving is up there. Like I said, the furniture's coming next week. Like the Public Safety Complex, the building is absolutely amazing. And we are planning, as we've noted, to have some tours for the Public Safety Complex. We'll have that information out probably next week, probably letting folks know where the, what the tours are. And I'm sure the library will have the same. And then the only other thing I want to add is, on May 13th, there is a meeting that's been scheduled with a location still to be determined, I think, about some really hard work the Economic Development Commission's been doing on visioning for the Green Bush and Drifway corridor area. So I want to let folks know that that's a Saturday and in the morning, and we want to have folks who are in those areas or in the town in general be able to come and attend that meeting. So just check the town's Facebook or website for that kind of information. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to a discussion of vote of outdoor entertainment permits at Zero Common Street, Steve O'Brien. How are you?
Good, Steve. Good.
Okay, so the first one is July 8th. Is that correct, 2017?
Yeah, a friend of the family's going to have a wedding. 125 people and a DJ.
Okay.
From like 2:00 to 10:30. And the second one's August 19th, a fundraiser for the Magical Moon Farm.
Okay.
It's going to be two live bands and probably like 300 people.
Wow.
Same time, 2:00 to 10:30.
10:30, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And have the butters been notified, Steve?
They will be.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's the barn.
This is the big open field. Well, the field that, you know, goes, there's a, yeah, small barn.
Okay.
The second one will be similar to what you had last summer. And Steve and I had a conversation about it maybe a month ago, and he had a, you know, it was a gathering, and it was during Heritage Days. And I, Steve invited me, and plenty of parking off the street. Steve had a detail last year, you wouldn't even know anything was going on, because all the parking's out in the field, and it was, it was, it was a great time. And if this is anything like that, Steve, you know, knows all the neighbors there, and to tomorrow's point, he'll notify them, invite them. I think last year, they came, some came, and, you know, it was a good time.
No, I have no problems with it. I was going to say, what's the Magical Moon fundraiser?
It's the Magical...
With cancer, that's the organization from Marshville.
So, you know what, you got to make sure you get that, yeah, use it, use it. I'm looking for the motion right now, Steve, is what I'm looking for.
I don't have it either.
That's good. So I have no problems with it, absolutely.
I can maybe just find my question.
There isn't one, do you want me to make a motion, Mr. Chair? We're okay with 2:00 to 11:00 P.M., everybody?
He said 10:30.
Oh, 10:30? Okay.
I think 11:00.
Make it 11:00. I would say 11:00, he can stop at 11:00 or, you know...
Move to approve an outdoor entertainment permit at, is it Zero Common Street?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, just wanted to make sure there wasn't a typo. At Zero Common Street for July 8, 2017, for a live band to be held between 2:00 P.M. and 11:00 P.M. for a wedding.
Second.
Second, Mr. Danahue. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Move to vote for approve an outdoor entertainment permit at Zero Common Street on August 19th, 2017, from the hours of 2:00 P.M. to 11:00 P.M. for the Magical Moon fundraiser.
Second.
Second, Mr. Danahue. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
See you, Steve.
Next, we have an update and presentation of 381st Parish Intersection, Al Bangards and Jeff Parenti. Okay, you said that right?
Yes.
You said that right, and also Jeff Bandini, would you care to join us?
Jeff Bandini, okay.
I'm going to try to share my screen.
What you wanted, you got to do an H and L, right?
No, I'm going to have to convert. I'm going to have to convert to H and L.
Okay.
I'll send it there, see what we got.
Switch it. Yeah. Sorry, gentlemen.
Switch your chairs.
Just get rid of that chair. Just get rid of that.
Switched it up. Get this back to you. For what I heard.
Tell you about it later.
That's yours.
Oh. We don't meet until, so our next meeting is the 18th. This is, this is a big event, we should say something about it. Towns a little kids go to that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, right, now they're busy.
I was going to sing "Happy Birthday" when he started up.
Oh, my God.
Thank you. Sorry for the slight AV delay there. So our purpose tonight is to review with the Board of Selectmen some preliminary concepts for improving pedestrian safety and traffic flow at the intersections, three intersections, Route 3A and First Parish, the big lights, at Route 3, at the high school entrance drive over here by the old police station, and at First Parish Road at the middle school entrance, which is out here by the old fire station opposite of the church. And we're really seeking input at this point, there's no vote or anything on your part required. And the result of this review will provide guidance for further work. Just as a little bit of background, the completion of the new Gates Middle School is projected to increase vehicular and pedestrian traffic on the Town Hall School campus significantly. We expect that this increase will lead to increased frustration by residents, traffic delays on Route 3A, and increased numbers of vehicular accidents. The school superintendent and the town administrator jointly commissioned NISH Engineering, who did the engineering, the traffic study on the school site itself, has commissioned them with their background knowledge in that to develop some conceptual level solutions for solving this problem at these three intersections. And with me today is Jeff Bandini and Jeff Parenti from NISH Engineering. I'll give a couple more comments and then turn it over to them to look at the pictures, because I think they're, they'd be what you want to see. NISH has delivered, developed basically two types of solutions to improve the pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular safety in the area that we're talking about. The first solution is to install two roundabouts on Route 3A, one at the First Parish Road and the second at the high school entrance drive. We'll call that the roundabout solution. There's a second solution, which is to modify the layout of the two intersections, the high school and First Parish Road, on Route 3A, and install coordinated traffic signals with signalized crosswalks. The third solution is a hybrid, which is to install a roundabout at the big intersection of Route 3A and First Parish, and a signalized intersection over at the high school, okay? High school entrance. So there are advantages and disadvantages. Everything is designed with traffic safety, pedestrian safety, and bicycle safety as the paramount importance. There are cost differences, there are pollution reduction differences between the various solutions, there is traffic flow and smoothness of operation of the different, different solutions. All of them are designed primarily with traffic, pedestrian, and bicycle safety as the first parameter. And so let me turn it over now to Jeff's to walk you through the conceptual drawings and where we are at this point.
Thank you all. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for inviting us tonight. Jeff Bandini and I, as Mr. Bangard said, we want to show you some concepts that we've been working on. We're going to show you three diagrams tonight, this is the first of three. We developed a series of concepts just at a sketch level, and with Al's help, we narrowed it down to the three that we're going to show you tonight. So what we're showing you tonight is called a concept plan. It's a very high-level planning type of study. It's not an engineering drawing. We did not do a topographic land survey for this project. So what you're seeing is a concept based on what we know from geographic information systems and other record plans. So there are a lot of assumptions that we made in terms of how much space we have available in developing what you're going to see on the screen tonight. So I'll go through these, these three, we'll keep our, our comments brief and leave our time for discussion with you. So just to orient you and everyone in the room, this is Town Hall, this is where we are right now, of course. This is the old police station building, the old fire station building. Down here is First Parish Road. This is the church across the street, and this is Route 3A. What we're calling this one here is Concept 1. It looks a lot like what you have today, except we're, what we're showing here are improvements over the existing roadways. We haven't taken any, we don't think we need any land for this concept. What we are showing is an improved intersection down at the intersection of First Parish and 3A. We've added left turn lanes north and southbound. Oh, it jumped on me. Let's try that again. Okay. Let's try that again. Okay. So we were adding turn lanes north and southbound. We've also eliminated what we're called, what we have called the slip lane, which is the island that separates the northbound right turn and the southbound right turn. We do need to leave space for large trucks to turn, so this, what shows up as the white area here on this diagram, will be either scored concrete or cobblestone where the rear end of a long truck can travel over it, but it would be very uncomfortable for a passenger car. Passenger cars are intended to go around that area here. At the second intersection on the top of the diagram, again, this is, looks very much like what you have today, except what we've done is we've added a traffic signal. It's a rather unusual intersection with these two pieces so close together. Jeff spent a lot of time designing a traffic signal, how it would operate, he did get it to work. It's a little unorthodox, but everything that's part of this intersection would be under traffic signal control. So there'd be a stop line on Route 3A, and then the three driveways coming into the, to the right half of this piece would also be under signal control. So, and then we have this existing pedestrian crossing here, which we would improve, and that would, that would provide pedestrian access across 3A to, to the rest of, of the middle and high school area here. We've also added some bicycle facilities along 3A, we have enough room to add bike lanes, and also new sidewalk along the town property here on the north side to augment the existing sidewalk on the south side. So again, this is, oh, and I also want to add that we've done some improvements here at the other driveway. We've added a short left turn lane so that people turning left into the school driveway can get out of the way of people going through. So that would eliminate some of the congestion that we see here on this side. But we're not proposing that this drive would be under traffic signal control. We did talk about it, but we don't think it's necessary. So again, just to summarize, a new traffic signal here and at First Parish, we would replace the existing traffic signal equipment, which is outdated and, and old, with new equipment, new poles, new traffic signal heads, new everything. Everything that you see would be, above the ground would be replaced. We're hoping that we can retain all the electrical work underneath the pavement. That's, that's always good news, if you can retain that, it saves us from having to dig up the road and build new conduit for that. So we're calling this Concept 1.
Jeff, just a quick question on that, if I could?
Of course.
So pedestrian crosswalks at any of those?
So there's an existing crosswalk at the, this one, so we'll improve that, we'll build new ramps, and that will be included in the signal. So pedestrians would have full protection crossing there. And then at the First Parish intersection, we have a pedestrian crossing on the north side here, where there, unfortunately, on the south side of this intersection, there is no pedestrian facility, so to build a connection there would, would not get a pedestrian, unfortunately, wouldn't get them to a destination. There is an existing crosswalk, or I should say, an existing sidewalk here, and also here east of the intersection on the north side of First Parish.
There is.
Thank you.
Not now there is.
There's not one, the now.
Yes, there is.
No, there's not.
Over here, connecting, connecting down, yeah, so this, this piece...
There's not.
You're right, this piece would be brand new, so we're proposing that this piece is new, connecting up to the existing sidewalk here, east of the school driveway. So now we'd have full connectivity for pedestrians coming who would wish to come this way, and of course, they're entering the, the school area this way today.
When you do the concept, what kind of analysis, if any, do you do at this time to determine how those two signals so close together, you know, don't back up traffic? Because today, there's so much traffic coming there, and it's backed up all the way to the intersection at school start time. Do you have data that you work with to synchronize those?
Yes, we use an analysis software, it's called Syncro, actually, that helps us determine what we call cycle length, which is, you know, how long it takes to run, you know, through a complete cycle, whether it's northbound, southbound, and then eastbound, westbound. See, right now, there's only eastbound, westbound, there's no exclusive, there's no pedestrian phase at all. So we would need to add that in, and again, work with the software and our engineering judgment as to what sort of phasing do we want to see, and what sort of cycle length do we want to see, such that the intersection doesn't get backed up during that time? Because a lot of times what we see when we do a lot of school projects is that the morning peak hour period of the adjacent roadway, folks getting to work and things like that, tends to run concurrently with the drop-off in the morning. So a lot of times, that can get extremely congested. So we like to look at, you know, the peak, very peak period of those two overlapping to make sure that we don't see a lot of vehicle delay and vehicle queuing and things like that.
Do you come and visually, at the time that you get to that, we get to that juncture, do you come and watch it in person at all?
Absolutely. It's part of our, you know, our recognizance when we do like a, a study like this, is that we'll, we'll get traffic counts, so we'll have some sort of physical hard data that tells us, you know, how many left turns there are, how many right turns there are, how many pedestrian trips and things like that. But we also like to send folks out to find out what those numbers mean in terms of capacity, right? Like if, if we're saying there's a lot of left turns here, well, when, when are those left turns concentrated, right? Is it all coming at the, at the same time? Is it more spread out over the course of an hour? That sort of thing. So we like to, we like to do that, too, like to use our, our eyes and just, not just rely simply on the software to tell us what to do.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, so again, we're calling that Concept 1. Moving on to Concept 2, and this is a little bit zoomed in, so let me reorient you again. This is the Town Hall building right here, and so this is showing... Okay, so again, we're calling that Concept One. Moving on to Concept Two, and this is a little bit zoomed in, so let me reorient you again. This is the town hall building right here, and so this is showing the intersection of First Parish Road and 3A. And what we're showing, of course, on the screen is a roundabout. What we've done is, we have some land available here in front of the town hall building, and what we've done is we've moved the 3A alignment north a little bit, and also First Parish Road, into the town-owned land to fit the roundabout. It's an interesting design. Obviously, it's a circle, and the circle can move around a little bit, and so we wanted to get it just in the right spot so that all the vehicles coming into the roundabout would yield to, as they're supposed to, to the vehicles inside. And so getting the design just right is critical for a roundabout. We're also showing here a new sidewalk on the south side, on the church side, wrapping around to, obviously, we would have to figure out how far to take it, and also new sidewalk as before on the north side. I want to point out that the bicycle facility on this concept is off the street, which is a little bit unique. So a bicycle coming from the east and continuing toward the roundabout would ramp up to sidewalk level here and then continue at sidewalk level with a six-inch separation between the bicycle lane, or we call it a cycle track, and the roadway. And that would continue around the perimeter of the roundabout and then up toward the school. So that provides an extra protection for the cyclist that's off the street with no conflicts at all with vehicles, and it's also separated from pedestrians. So pedestrians would be on the one side, and the bicycles would be on the other. So that provides a nice layer of protection. Again, we have the space available, and it's superior to having the bicycles on the street itself, separated by just some paint.
Jeff, is that drawn to scale? I know it's conceptual, is it?
It is. It's rather large, and it has to be to accommodate long vehicles.
Taking a lot of the front lawn.
Exactly. And it also, and I was really hoping to keep that beautiful red maple that's out there right now, and unfortunately, that, I believe the trunk of that tree is right about here.
Wow.
So, again, yeah, so just on that point, this inner circle here, which can be landscaped, I mean, you can have any kind of degree of landscaping that you wish here. This ring here that's hatched would be for long vehicles to run over, the rear of those vehicles would have to run over this part. Again, it would be scored concrete or a cobblestone or some kind of a stone, and passenger vehicles would be intended to go on the outer ring here. Each approach has what we call a splitter island, and it allows a pedestrian to cross halfway, wait for a break, and then cross the rest of the way here, and the same thing on this side. And we're also showing, and again, these sidewalks would be replaced completely here with concrete sidewalk all the way around, and we'd have to decide how far we want to go. But as you mentioned, one big disadvantage of this concept is the amount of space that it would take. And notice here, too, this thin white line here is approximately the existing curb. So any land in here, we would have to look at land taking to this here, which I believe is the town forest, if I'm not mistaken. So that's a serious consideration, and we do get land back in here and here, but this concept, it's a really nice concept, and it does a lot of things, but it is a large commitment, and it does have disadvantages of taking a lot of space. So we're calling that Concept Two A. And then moving to the final concept, and so this is up the street at the town hall high school driveway. Again, to orient you, this is the town hall building and the old police station building here. So before, we are showing you a concept that was controlled by a traffic signal. Here, we're doing it with a roundabout, and so we're, in this concept, we have dead-ended the town hall driveway here because having a fifth entrance to that roundabout would make it too large, so we couldn't do that. So we have this other egress behind the town hall and old police station buildings that we can take advantage of, and then this roadway goes up to the high school. Here, we are showing the new sidewalks as in the other concepts, the crossing across Route 3A with that splitter island. There would not be a traffic signal here, but you would have the splitter island, which provides a refuge for a pedestrian going halfway and then crossing again the other half.
Someone would stand in the middle of 3A? And you guys been out there?
It's not worth it.
Oh, of course. Today, it's scary. The idea with this concept is that both entering and exiting the roundabout, that vehicle speeds would be vastly reduced to something like 15 to 20 miles an hour. So a much different experience to the 45 or 50 that you get today. No question about it. Again, the same concept as before. This roundabout circle is smaller than the first. There is landscaped area in the middle, this inner ring for longer vehicles, and then, of course, the outer ring for passenger vehicles. Crosswalks bringing people into the property and up to the school, up to the high school, and then we can, we do have enough room to fit in a bike lane on the street going up toward the high school building just off, just off the edge of this photograph. So this is the third of three concepts. We're calling this Concept Three, and now I'll open it up to questions from the board.
So is Concept Three two roundabouts, or is it a roundabout and the four-way at First Parish?
Well, the way we did it is we, the two intersections are independent. So it could conceivably operate with a traffic signal at one and roundabout at the other, or two roundabouts, or two signals as we showed in Concept One, and any combination thereof. If we wanted to do a roundabout at one and a signal at the other, we'd have to be very, very careful not to have a line of traffic backing into that roundabout, which is very bad for a roundabout. So that, we could do it, we just have to be very careful with our signal design. But they are, at least at a conceptual level, they're interchangeable.
And then I just have one more question, Mr. Chair. Did you take into consideration the design of what's happening up in Cohasset and Henry Turner Bailey? Are you involved in that at all, that's happening now with the Department of Transportation up the street? I'm just wondering for the whole flow coming from north to south, you know, will it be in sync with regards to design?
How far is that project?
I don't know. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So there's a big project up from Cohasset down to Henry Turner Bailey Road that Kevin Cafferty and I went to and had a briefing on last year. They're about two or three years into design. It's being done to accommodate all the traffic up there by shaws and all through that, and there's, it's quite extensive. So I just think we should make sure that we're in sync with that design.
We're far enough away from the, just like, we're far enough away from the
Yeah, this is years.
Green Bush roundabout.
You're talking about distance?
Yeah. When you have a signal, then you jam up traffic, okay? So the slugs, you'll see, if you go further north on Route 3A, the slugs continually accumulate. You get past King Street, and then you get past the next intersection, then you're up at Stop and Shop. Those, by the time you get up to where Avon, or what's called Avalon Hill is, you know, you've got this massive slug of traffic going through. So things that stop traffic create traffic. Things that keep traffic moving enable the pattern to be smoother. So when you come up through Marshfield, through Situate, and all the way through Situate, traffic's moving. When you get up there around Stop and Shop, it's all jammed up by the virtue of the stoplights that allow people to collect. So if we, this is a stoplight already, so this is causing some jamming action of traffic. Anything to be done with two traffic signals would have to be coordinated so they have to look like one traffic signal. You know, you wouldn't want to stop twice. So I'm sure that there'd be, the electronics would be such that they would operate in close connection. If there were two roundabouts, they would operate in two close connections, also because it would keep the traffic moving, just as the one down on Green Bush does and the one up, really up at, if you will, at Hingham does, at the Hingham Rotary. So that's, I think if we, the more we jam up traffic, the more we'll see traffic impact up north.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're talking to one another, because we're only, what, a mile and a half, two miles away.
At what point will Mass Highway weigh in?
That's my question. Oh, heavily.
No, but at what point?
Oh, well, we are still, we're still at the conceptual level now, and that's all we've funded. The next phase would be then to move to design engineering, design engineering and permitting. And that's where we will need to get funding on the order of around $150,000 to $200,000 for that level of permitting. That's when Mass Highway weighs in. As a matter of fact, one reason we're doing roundabout designs is Mass Highway now requires roundabout designs as one consideration for every time you do something on one of the state roads. So we're meeting that need with Mass Highway. We would review, we could review this with them, but until we get to that permitting level of engineering, they're not going to spend much time on it. And judging by the amount of time they spend on just the signal at the fire station and police station, they'll have a lot to say. They have a lot to say about a lot of little details, and that runs up, runs up the cost a bit, but I'm sure in the end, you end up with a better product. I might talk briefly about cost, but there is a cost differential. The two roundabout solution, now, we're at the, we're at what's called the conceptual engineering phase, which is when you tend to be very, very conservative so that numbers don't go up, okay? So on a conservative basis, the roundabout design, the two roundabout design with engineering and construction would run around $2.2 million. The signalized solution, which would be the one with the two signals, design and construction would be about half of that, about $1.1 million. And that's because we already have some infrastructure in place. There's a lot less paving work to do, a lot less earth moving and paving, and probably, quite frankly, there's a lot less traffic management during the construction period that would be required when you're doing the bigger solution, roundabout. The hybrid solution, which is one roundabout and one traffic signal up at the high school, design and construction is estimated to be about $1.8 million. So we're talking between $1 and $2 million solution. The objective was to do conceptual engineering, gather some community input, some committee input, and then ask town meeting for funding for then design, engineering at the next, at the fall, at the spring town meeting, get the project to what's called shovel-ready, and then our state legislator, work with our state legislator or state senators to get an earmark or some state funding to do the actual construction project, because this far exceeds our highway budgets and everything else. So that's kind of the steps that we're looking at going through here.
That's interesting. I mean, you know, it's, I'm not sure a hybrid would work because of the backup of the traffic light in one of the two intersections. I think, but I like the roundabout concept. And I know you lose some land, but on the other hand, it slows traffic down and keeps it flowing, and so I'm fascinated by the two roundabout solution.
Good. I have to say that the Green Bush roundabout, I did not think was going to work, and it does work.
Works, yeah.
It does work, so.
This roundabout would be better for your
Thank you.
...business than, for businesses like yours, rather. Well, no, this would be better than the Green Bush one.
Just design better, because the trucks will be, to go around easier.
Well, three things are happening there. One is there's not five intersections as there is at the Green Bush one.
Right.
Number two, we're not working around, Mass Highway was instructed, the designers to work around the old house on the corner and don't, so therefore, everything is quite compromised.
Right.
And then you've got that horrendous right turn thing that they put in because trucks couldn't make it around. So this is designed with the luxury of, we own this space, and we could, I think you designed for wheelbase 60? WB60?
I think it was higher than that.
Higher, WB80?
Yeah, I think, because three is a state highway, I think it's 68 maybe.
Okay.
So it's a larger truck.
So it's, and it has the rumble strip, which helps for your trailing wheels. So the advantage of roundabouts is that reduces pollution because you don't have cars queuing and waiting. It does keep traffic moving. There are fewer, what they call, conflict movements. If you look, if you begin diagramming in an intersection with signals, the number of times when traffic moves in front of other traffic and start doing the head count of those, and then you compare, okay, one piece of traffic is going at highway speeds to beat the light, and the other one is trying to make a left-hand turn, you see why signalized intersections have some accidents at higher speeds and are therefore more dangerous. Roundabouts have accidents, but they're at 20 miles an hour below the pedestrian rate at which pedestrians are seriously injured, and it has some, it has the advantages in crossing, that you're crossing traffic that's moving more slowly as opposed to hoping that guy coming down the street has seen the red light and respects it and not plowing through at 55 or 60 trying to beat the light. As I said in the roundabout design, I mean, everyone's run a traffic signal, but no one's ever run a roundabout.
Only one time.
If they do, they end up in the center, which is many times referred to as, the center green section there is, on a number of occasions, has been referred to as the drunk trap. So we're not asking for a specific direction. We'd like indications. Mr. O'Toole, do you have comment you want to make? I'd look like you're
No, no, I just, I mean, it's funny, I was looking, I really liked the first concept, but now the more you describe the roundabouts, I kind of, to get a little bit more thought there.
So can you talk about any easements or takings that have affected the cost?
So the land takings for, it's almost, in almost every case, roundabouts do require some kind of an easement or handover taking. We did not account, we don't know what, how much that would be, like I said, we don't have a land survey, so we don't know how much land we would need and what the costs associated that, with that would be. But certainly, this section of the roundabout at First Parish, we would need land here, and potentially, it's close, on the northwest corner, we might need some there as well. And like you say, that does, and the numbers that Al mentioned before does not include land taking. We did include a 20% contingency. At this level, is a pretty big contingency, so we wanted to be conservative as possible. Would the land takings be part of that 20%? It's hard to say until we start getting into the survey and this 25% designer at least.
Can you look at the Concept One, please? So does the traffic flow pattern that you contemplated here affect it? Is that town hall, that right of way in front of the town hall is dead-ended by the old police station? Is it effective in any way, as you have in the second concept?
It would, I think would help us.
Yeah, you'd get one, I don't know if you'd get one less space, depending on if you wanted to run the high school driveway and the town hall at the same time, but certainly, you'd get less conflict if there weren't folks coming out of the town hall at the same time and you were running at the same. So yes, if you did close that up, you would see some benefit from that.
Any other?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
No, I know, but I don't know. It just might.
I think it might be the opposite.
All right, whatever you think. Okay. Yeah, we might have to stay with that order.
Yeah.
I was just gonna, I suggested do this one next.
Yeah, because they're here.
What about that?
Oh, you have to do that, right?
I think. Can we take the next two out of order, Tricia?
You think?
Can we take the next two out of order, or no?
You have scheduled public
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so we can't.
Right, right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so we're running just a couple of minutes behind. We have a public hearing and a discussion. City Administrative Co-creation of the Department of Planning and Development and Director of Planning and Development is outlined in the City of Town Charter, Section 5-1B and 5-3.
So, Mr. Chair, as you know, we discussed last week about the town meeting warrant, and this is an article on the town meeting warrant to change the reporting authority by creating a new Director of Planning and Planning Development and Department. Under the charter, the board is allowed to propose two town meeting changes in the organizational structure of the town. That was the foresight of the folks who did the town charter to have, recognizing that town operations can change, so it's not static documents, it's dynamic. So as part of that, the charter provides, under the section that you refer to, the ability So as part of that, the charter provides under the section that you refer to, the ability of the Board to propose to town meetings a change in organizations, which the creation of Department of Planning and Development with the Director involves. And under the code as provided in the charter is that there's a noticed public hearing, at least one, no less than seven days before town meeting, where folks can come and give comment for the Board to hear, and to amend the plan before it's presented to town meeting or presented, when it seems fit. All town meeting does is vote up and down. It doesn't make amendments or alter the plan in any way. This is all specified in the charter. So Marty, we noticed, we talked earlier that the Board has on their agenda to vote, that's not required by the charter, but that does not preclude the Board from voting under the organizational plan, so. So I checked out. So, you have a variety of information in your packet. I think the Board's aware that the Economic Development Commission, Conservation Commission, and Planning Board also reviewed the proposed position. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board both unanimously voted to support it, and I believe the Economic Development Commission is having a vote upcoming. So it's really, the purpose of tonight is to solicit input from the public.
Want me to start with the Board first, or?
It's up to you, as soon as I can find it. It's up to you.
Actually, I can start with the public. If anybody has any comments or questions, or... Yes.
If you're sure that I'm right, what do you have to say? On the charter, where does this position fall? Like, is there with a new position?
Yeah, would you, you'd be quoting you, right?
Right, so it would go straight up to me, then Conservation, Planning, and Building would have a direct line to that position.
So this will be kind of really important?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments from the Board?
Well, I'm happy to make a comment. This was, this was a position that I felt was really important to our town, and I think, you know, the Board has talked about it a lot in the past year. We've got so much development happening, we've got North City, we've got Green Bush, and I think we really have a need to have a cohesive plan and bring all of our departments together. And I also believe that by adding this position, it adds that extra level of supervision and checks and balances, and then reports up to Trish, so it's nice to, to break that apart as well from an organizational standpoint. So I for one feel very strongly that this is really needed, especially with the growth and the amount of development that's happening in this town, so that we can control the look of our town a little bit better and bring all those different departments together. So, I do support the position.
I'll listen, I'll go last, as in public.
I agree with Mark. This is a position that we've been talking about, when Rick Murray was here and I talked about it years ago, and I just, I see it as a, it's putting the town in a position that needs to be in the 21st century. There's so many things that are going on, so complicated with all the issues between water and sewer and building and growth and development, and why this, why that, why not there, why not here? This position ties it all together, gives you continuity, and I think, it's long overdue. That's really my thoughts on it. And a lot of times, people will turn around and say, well, you're creating a new position, you're creating more money, you're creating more hierarchy. It's not. It's, it's actually a position that is being created as a result of not hiring other positions. So it's a net neutral, I guess, really is the way to put it. So, I mean, you know, the town is growing, it's going to continue to grow, there's only so much land to be built on, which means that now people are going to be buying land and structures and start rebuilding, and it's just going to keep going. And the key to this position is, it's dealing with the planning in a very comprehensive, with continuity. You know, people last year talked about Green Bush and the MBTA, and the Planning Board came before the Board saying, we need to have a 40R. And a lot of people hear about 40Bs, and I've sat on a lot of 40Bs in the zoning board. And 40R is a friendly 40R, it's basically a friendly 40B, but the key on the 40R, Chapter 40R, is that the process is streamlined, but you have to have a design, you have to have a concept. We didn't have a designer concept, which is one of the reasons why it never got through town meeting, because at the time, the planning was saying, well, let's just get it passed, and then we'll go back and do the, the concept of what we really want. You can't do that. You need to have somebody who's going to say, this is the image, the kind of like, what we want is our town, because when something's going to be built for the next 20 or 30, it's actually going to be built for 50 to 60 years, or 100 years. So, you take that, then you get the concept of sewer, and then North City, and then we have priorities, there's just, it's, it's, there are a lot of levels of layers of complexity that needs to be dealt with. We talk about economic growth and the Driftway with respect to maybe a hotel next to the public golf course. Maybe not. You know, you've got an idea of what are you going to do with the transfer station in the future? There's a lot of land there. You know, another 50 years or something, what's going to happen when the solar array may be taken down? Do we put up another one? Do you build on top of that? I mean, these are things that you have to look, not just short-term, midterm, long-term. We had a report dealing with, essentially with sea water rise. You know, what's going to happen in 70, 80 years? If, it's the worst-case scenario. You've got to start thinking, if water's going to be coming into Front Street and flooding on a very regular basis, as a town, people need to think about, maybe we need to move the business district, need to get out of harm's way and move up gradient. Those are, those are discussions for future Boards and probably our kids to be talking about, but an economic planner in this position is to take a look at things, not just short-term, but long-term. And I just see tremendous value, you know, you've got the seawalls, and how are we doing that? And what are we going to do it? You've got beaches, that you have with a beach committee that's taking a look and saying, how can we, from an economic standpoint, point, generate more revenue for the town? How do we help our businesses survive during the winter? A lot of discussion, you know, can be dealt with in this position, and I think they're able to draw upon the Coastal Resource Office position, the Planning Department, planning and what's going on, the Building Department and trying to deal with continuity with roundabouts, if that's the way to go, or better with our accessibility with our Commission on Disabilities, because, you know, there are a lot of roads and streets as far as intersections that are not compliant. How are we going to deal with this going forward? So, I just see this as, it's a necessity that the town needs to move in this direction, and I, you know, I wholeheartedly support it. I think, you know, some people might say, well gee, we have a town planner, maybe, you know, we can use that. Well, it's beyond just the planner, because the planner's dealing with a lot of issues with subdivisions, with scenic roads, you know, they have so much work just right now presently. You need somebody who's going to be thinking long-term and looking at the big picture and trying to tie it all together. So, I, again, go back to what I said, I wholeheartedly support it. It's long overdue, it's just caught up to us now because there's so much that's going on in the town that we've been focused on, and, you know, you know, I haven't even touched on the conservation land on the West End, and how we need to take a look at that from planning and economic, and how do you augment that? How do you get inroads with trails so people can use it, with parking, so that everybody has access to it, the way that the, I forgot what it's called in Dover Street in Norwell, that people use that trail system? We have so much opportunity in the West End that the people, we need to get more access to, and, and bikes and bike paths, and how do you get linkage and connecting it? There's just so much potential out of the position, so. I ramble on, but I can see the benefits of it, and, you know, I hope the town or the people at town meeting will support it.
Just real quick, if I could, so, I, you know, I've been back and forth on the, on this issue, and I've listened to everything, Slickman Curran and Slickman Dan, he said, and at this time, I don't support the position. I do see the importance of a lot of the departments and things and the, and tying everything together, but at this particular time, I just can't support it. I'm just going to, you know, leave it at that.
The only thing I was going to say before the public speaks is, thought a developer not too long ago said we could use some more help, and the only thing I can add on what the two of you said is, maybe it would streamline things, and maybe it would be easier, faster, more economical to have things done, if we, if this person's in this position. I mean, I agree with everything you said, John and Mark, that's the only thing I could add, so.
I think there's just one, one more thing, Mr. Chair, that I'd like to point out. You know, when you talk about all these committees that are involved in the betterment of our town, most of them are volunteers. You know, we've got EDC, all volunteers, Conservation, all volunteers, zoning, all volunteers, appointed by us. And we need a professional to bring all that together, and to put some more resources into the Planning Department and the Building Department. So to your point, there can be more efficiency, things can go through a little bit quicker, but also that, that vision is collectively brought together. So that, that's just another point I would like to raise, and we have some great volunteers, but a lot of times, their ideas don't move forward as quickly because there's not somebody to bring that all together and bring it to the next step. That was my other point.
Yes, sir.
Ben, 99 First Parish Road. Under the current organization in the town charter, the Planning Board sits as an independent elected body that works in parallel with the Board of Slickman and answers directly to the voting populace. Under the proposed reorganization, is the Planning Board going to remain as such?
Yeah, absolutely, doesn't change. They're elected. This is just a position within town hall that's being created, and, you know, just like the planner, the planner's an employee, it's not an elected position.
The town planner is appointed by the town minister, so that organization starts its existence.
So the support organization for the town planner is the Planning Board, really, but the town planner is separate.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Darren Campbell, 57 East Court. I'm just kind of curious, how many towns around, neighborhood towns and similar size have this department and position as well? That's a, that's a topic.
I don't know.
So if we could count, if there's...
I don't need a number.
No, I'd say there's like over 100, easily. We're looking at them, and I'm happy to share it with you.
It was actually pretty surprising. We did a salary survey to see what the general salary would, and we got, we're proud of Alyssa, and over 80, so, and that was, I think, it wasn't statewide, it was just for a public interest.
Some local ones, Duxbury.
Between 10,000 and 30,000.
I think that's what Dan was talking about.
So Pembroke, Waymouth, Kingston, Hingham, Foxborough, Duxbury, just to give you some local guys that...
Plymouth has it?
Plymouth, yeah, Norfolk.
Plymouth is a prime example that I've looked at, because when I have business with clients down there, what I've found is that, you know, they've, they have so much, now granted, they're almost twice the size of City, 58,000 with a population and landside, it's huge. But there's so much going on between the growth and development and businesses and what they're trying to do, and they do a really nice job, and, you know, you can see the value. Now granted, we're not going to be Plymouth, but I can see, you know, with the Driftway and North City, Homarock, that's another destination that's undertapped. And, you know, tonight, I'm not sure if you folks are here for the discussion on the proving grounds, but I'm like, you sit here and you go, there's a possibility of a segment of people with, you know, older, 55 and older for homes, or with the Housing Authority, affordable homes. And so, sometimes people don't want that, some people would rather just see homes, but then if you have homes, more kids in your schools, more schools, you've got to have the tax base, the schools, it creates a whole host of things. And then you'd say, well, from a tax perspective, you know, having 55 and older or two-bedroom homes, you get your tax revenue, but it doesn't give you the kids, and so, as hard as that may sound, it's just the reality, that we don't have a lot of homes for the elderly or just, you know, second homes for two to three bedrooms that we need, or affordable homes. It's just, in this position, you know, you look at all these issues, you know, we had water situation last year, I mean, that's another thing. The Water Department's concerned about the water, the water's back great back, we've got all this rain, and yet, it's still an issue that we've got to take a look at going forward. And so that's, that's how I see it, as, as an opportunity.
I just want to add, Mr. Chair, there's a, a big component in this position about economic development. All the work that the EDC's done with these studies, like the visioning I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, for someone to take these and actually really start to implement them, so they're not shelf-kept.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Yes, Steve Bjorkland, 38 Lataway, and I do a lot of development in town. I'm actually against this position at this point in time, and I committed a year ago in front of the Board and explained, at least my position is that we really need to help Conservation, the Board Health, Planning Board, Building Department, but we need to do it at a lower level. As far as developers are concerned, we're looking for permits in a timely fashion, another boss isn't going to do that. But people that can go do inspections and help the people right now that are paid individuals in town, each Board does have a paid person in town, so it's not just volunteer people. Each Board, you know, town planner is paid, Board Health's paid, path's paid, and Conservation, they all need help, they need help at the lower level. So I would suggest, take the money, use the money to help those guys out, and in the future, John, if, you know, if we need this position in the future, I think that's time to do it. Right now, we still have a big problem we've got to fix, and I don't think that this is the solution to the problem.
No.
If I could just add to Mr. Bjorkland's questions, one of the reasons I propose this in my budget is I have conversations regularly with developers in town, and this is one of the needs that they expressed in terms of mediation and conflict resolution sometime. And he's also right that we can do better in terms of permit turnaround time. But you will recall that the Board approved increased funding in both the Conservation and Planning Board offices last week to do just what Mr. Bjorkland mentioned the last time he came to the building. I took those comments to heart, and when we discovered we had extra revenue based on revenue, you know, receipts and local aid, we increased those boots on the ground, I think he used the term. So both Conservation and Planning do have those extra hours available to them.
Yes, sir.
Ben, 99 First Parish Road, again, just one more comment. In the job description, which I had read, and also in our, in the meetings discussing this position, there's a real emphasis on development and also economic, so building development and infrastructure development as well as economic development. In the day and age that we live in currently, I think that we really need to consider incorporating the terms resiliency and sustainability into this job description, because I think it's above most important is that we hire somebody that is going to be a leader and a visionary that also embraces those values. Thank you.
You bring up a good point, because one, one of the other aspects of this position, in my view, is to help manage the CPC money as well, because currently, that, those funds largely are distributed by folks coming with different projects to the CPC Board and making a determination, there, there's not a vision, again, from a town aspect as to how to really utilize and maximize those funds with a long-term plan. So sustainability, certainly, with regards to funding and open space and all that, absolutely agree with you.
Yeah, no, Ben, I totally agree with you on that. I mean, it's, not just from an economic, I mean, the economic component is that we're like, what, 93% residential tax and the rest is like about 4%? And, you know, so the idea is try to augment the business, but it's really not going to be like some of these other towns, because the other half is all water. But it's being able to have businesses that people will go to and use, that's the economic standpoint, but I have to agree with you, I mean, there's a long-term picture of like, maintaining, sustaining things, but also protecting things, you know? The town, the image, the, the, the ability, the people who are here, live here, continue to live here, you know? So I absolutely agree.
Well, just maybe I would could consider amending the job description before the town meeting.
Absolutely, I think that's an excellent suggestion. The job description isn't part of the plan, but we can certainly have.
Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
I don't think, is it necessary to vote?
No, I don't think we have to vote.
It's already on the warrant.
We'll wait till Tony's here.
Right.
Yep. Well, it's already on the warrant, so. Moving on to an interview and a vote, City of Housing Authority vacancies with members of the City of Housing Authority? We have Joe Caffrey and Tamara Duante.
Are we voting on that? No, they don't need to. I thought the charter required it, but it doesn't.
Come on up, pass seat. There you go.
Just give it one second, see if the rain can fix us, okay?
Yeah, mine keeps coming and going. How are your folks tonight?
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for having us here. We have a couple of vacancies on the Housing Authority Board, and we can be for you this evening to have plenty of, to find candidates to fill the remains of those terms.
Okay. What are the terms that are left? I know you're not getting three, but how many more years?
I think one of them goes through 2018 and...
Next year, and then the other one's 2019 or something?
I believe so.
Okay.
Do we have confirmation on that?
Actually, I checked with town council, and when I have a motion, it's what town council has that.
So I think it's important just to sort of note about a law, a law change and regulation change, because I think, I've had a lot of... change, because I think, I've had a lot of questions about why is the Board of Selectmen appointing two positions to an elected board? So I think that's important to educate the public as to why this is happening.
Yeah, I learned a lot about this as well.
So I don't know if you want, want to let folks know, Marty, or... Or I can.
Yeah, why don't you, because...
Okay. Just so folks know, there was a change in the law, and we received notice also from, you know, our legal counsel as well as the Department of Housing and Community Development, which really regulates the Situate Housing Authority, which is a separate entity. So because the law is about to change, I think, in the near future with requiring you to have tenant representation...
Correct. That was supposed to take place this year.
Right.
They pushed that off. So a lot of this has been up in the air, waiting for those changes to take effect.
Exactly. So I just think it's good to educate everybody why we're doing this. And so they've advised us that it is in our purview to appoint folks to fill vacancies until such time that that regulation is passed, correct? So make sure I convey that correctly.
So we checked it all with town council, but it is unusual to have elected boards go for, not go on the ballot when we have a ballot election next month. But we're doing it right, so.
Excellent. So why don't we just, I mean, we have your backgrounds here, but maybe tomorrow we could just start with you, just a little bit about your background.
Hi, thanks for having me, Chairman and board members. Tammy Durante, I've been a resident of Situate for twenty-four years, currently living on Seventy-three Prep Road. I'm married, I live, I have two twin boys, obviously, who are graduating from Situate High School this year. I currently am working for a company that builds products and services for a segment of financial services industry, and I'm responsible for their information, security, audit and compliance, and third-party management. I mean, do you want me to go with the why?
Give us the why.
So when the opening was presented to me, I actually was very excited. I've been completely impressed with what the town has accomplished over the past couple of years. It's really been amazing. You talked about the volunteers, you've talked about the initiatives, how crazy it is with all of these ideas and what we're choosing to do and whatnot. And when I heard about it and did some research on housing plan, what your methodologies were, what the goals were, short-term, long-term, gaps in the compliance that we have ahead of us, read the article about what the surrounding towns are doing, I really felt like this is something that could be a true success. I have a little bit of background in managing vendors, holding them accountable, making sure that the decisions are defendable, sometimes they're controversial, and so I thought maybe I could bring that to the table, but I'm also enthusiastic just to be eyes and ears, be part of the town, on one of these volunteer committees, although elected, to have another successful project like the Lawson Wayne Project for the town of Situate. Keep the ball rolling.
Excellent. Any questions?
Have you been attending meetings? Maybe you answered, I was turning my tablet over, so...
I have not.
All right, and able to, all right.
You mean, they tried to do one and it didn't work out.
Okay, all right.
Probably didn't have a quorum. Probably. There's some, could be.
Hi, I'm Jill Cafrey. Thanks for having me, board. I've been a resident of Situate pretty much all my life. I live at Twenty-One Bayless Causeway in Minnetonka, and I have four children, the youngest one just went off to college. And I've also been in real estate for thirty years, very successful career, and I've, you know, I want to give back to the town, and I think I have some experience being in the real estate industry for as long as I have been.
So I can vouch for Tammy and Jill and both of them from different parts of my life, hockey rink and cushy. So I think they're two phenomenal candidates that you have been able to recruit and bring forward and show interest, so certainly happy to move them forward.
Great. Okay. Anything, any public have any questions at all, or? Have a motion?
Okay, so...
Roll call total.
I have to interject just in terms of a point of order. So it's a little different because you're elected board, so what, and John and Sean know what I'm gonna say. Lorraine, I don't think you've been through it, so it's my oversight, not on the executive action. You have to enter the name into nomination. So either members of the Housing Authority or the Board of Selectmen can enter a name into nomination. Again, even though we have two recommended candidates, it's so...
And then we all vote, correct?
So, right, so the expiration term is the same for both because it's to the next election. So what you would do is you'd first enter and entertain nominations for the first term that expires till, you know, two thousand and eighteen. And then, Marty, you would say any more nominations, and you would close nominations, and then by roll call vote, both members of the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority vote. That's when the nomination's been placed, okay?
Just a quick question on that. So on the, on the motion itself, it actually has different dates?
So, yeah, it's whatever the motion is, but the date's there.
Okay.
Do the second one first.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Do the second one first. Okay, that makes sense.
So you open the floor for nominations for...
Okay.
What you nominate?
I'd like to make nomination for Jill Cafrey for the remainder of the term. Okay.
Second, do we have any more nominations? No?
Yeah.
No nominations?
Yeah.
We got a nominee.
No, 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 we're just doing one position at a time.
All right, there we go.
See, no more nominations, you'll close nominations.
Okay, close nominations.
Now you can entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion.
I move to approve an interim appointment of Jill Cafrey to the vacancy on the Situate Housing Authority for the remainder of the term, otherwise are to set to expire in two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Until otherwise, another person is qualified.
And it'll be a roll call vote.
Okay, a second by Mr. Danahue?
It'll be a roll call vote.
Okay.
So Mr. Coulter?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Collins?
He's not here.
Okay. There should be three people here from the Housing Authority. Is anyone?
Yeah, we have two.
Okay. Mr. Duane?
Gotta say yes.
Yes.
Do they have a quorum?
Okay.
Is that okay? You still have a quorum.
Mr. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Carron?
Yes.
Mr. Danahue?
Yes.
Mr. Havre?
Yes.
Do they have a quorum? Are we okay? I think you're okay, you have a quorum. You have two, so not all three, so you're okay.
Okay. So that one's done?
That's... Congrats, Dave. You're on.
I vote for nominations for the second one.
Okay, so open nominations for the term set to expire in two thousand and twenty, or until the, until the two thousand and eighteen annual town election, or until another person is qualified. Nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tamara Durante for the remainder of the term expiring in May of two thousand and one.
Okay. Do we have any more nominations? Nominations are closed? I'll second that nomination. Roll call again?
I'd like to move to appointer. Move to approve the interim appointment of Tamara Durante to the vacancy on the Situate Housing Authority for the term otherwise set to expire in two thousand and twenty, until two thousand and eighteen annual town election, or until another person is qualified.
So roll call vote of the Housing Authority, Mr. Stephen Coulter?
Yes.
Mr. John Duane?
Yes.
Of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. O'Toole?
Yes.
Ms. Carron?
Yes.
Mr. Danahue?
Yes.
Mr. Havre?
Yes.
Actually, couldn't Ms. Cafrey also vote? She's on it right now. You gotta get sworn, you're right, sorry. Trying to help you out.
How many members do they have? Only five, but they're okay with two?
Yeah, because I think you get a quorum. That's all you're looking for.
Because between us and them.
There's only three right now. Two out of the three is a quorum, you only have three.
Oh, all right, two, two's majority, all right, great.
Let's have Kathy Demarche consider.
Process because they're an elected board, so that's why it's a little different.
Okay. So we just elect them and they pay us?
And that's why it's a joint appointment. Same, you would do the same for school committee or planning board if there was a vacancy.
So make sure you visit Kathy, Carron, and get your meeting law information and all that stuff.
Okay, great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Jump over to Toll? Yeah, I'm going. I just have one question, is Nina still one open? No.
No. Mike Collins is the state appointee.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't get elected or something like that, right?
All right, so I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Taylor, don't be upset at me, but I'm just gonna skip up real quick to the, to the update from Toll Brothers, Bill Orinberger.
Let him know, he's standing out there.
Can you let Mr. Orinberger know that we're ready for him? He's standing right out there. Thank you.
So should we find out how many people are here for traffic signs, or toll, or...
We kind of, we kind of assume they're all here for...
Maybe they're all here for traffic.
Why don't you do a raise your hand?
Yeah, actually, the majority is.
Yeah.
All right.
So maybe do traffic.
All right, yeah.
Traffic.
Yeah, all right.
Sorry, Bill. Actually, I have another one.
No, we...
Sorry, we're premature, sorry about that. Okay. Taylor. Anyway, we have a discussion to vote for the town of Situate opt-in to Mass General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C, the modern municipal speed limit change. We have Chris Bagley, Chairman, Traffic Rules and Regulations, and Officer Taylor Billings, Situate Police Department, and Sean McCarthy, Town Engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically, hi.
How are you?
Good, how you doing, Marty?
Good, thanks.
I didn't know if you guys got any information to...
Would you have to speak up, please, something?
Yeah. I don't know if you got any information prior to this meeting and we got, because there's a lot to digest in regards to it.
I didn't, I perused it, I didn't look through every detail on it.
Essentially, we just wanted to present it to you, we're not looking for a vote right now.
Right.
But basically, if I can read something real quick for you guys, we would like to discuss something that government, discuss the statutes that Governor Baker signed on August ninth, two thousand and sixteen, became effective on November seventh, two thousand and sixteen, under the Act of two thousand and sixteen, known as the Act of Modernization, Municipal, Financial, and Government Bill. These statutes, along with traffic engineering recommendations of MassDOT, two thousand and nine Federal Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and the Massachusetts Amendment to the MUTCD in two thousand and twelve, recommend the uniform implementation by municipalities to adopt these statutes, which will increase their effectiveness statewide. Essentially, what we're looking at is changing the thickly settled areas from, the thickly settled and business districts from thirty miles an hour to twenty-five, and there's also a section that includes safety zones that would make that into twenty miles an hour. Basically, we feel the lot of speeding in regards to Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee, and a lot of residents have been coming in in regards to that, and they've all liked this new proposal under the Chapter Ninety. Essentially, the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee supports this, and we're hoping that the board would review it and adopt it accordingly. If you want, there's some basics on Section One-Nine-Three, which they changed, which basically changes current statutory speed limit for thickly settled areas from thirty to twenty-five, but that's only in areas without existing speed limit signs. So basically, most of your neighborhoods that don't have signs, it'd make that uniformly twenty-five miles an hour. And then they had another section that they wanted to add, like I said, was for the safety zones, which is basically areas that can, areas that we call a safety zone, which is basically near parks, beaches, playgrounds, senior sitting, citizen housing, hospitals, medical facilities, schools, and daycare facilities. But overall, me, Taylor, and Sean wanted to present it to you, to the board, to look at. We think it's something viable that the town should at least review and take on. I myself, I work for the Commonwealth, we, I see a lot of traffic accidents, I believe just the five mile per hour change. I've read some analysis where it's between thirteen to twenty percent, there's a drop in regards to fatalities and bodily harm in vehicles, so it seems like it's a small drop, but it does factor in, especially with the human factor where people go twenty-five, see the speed limit twenty-five, I'm gonna go thirty, thirty, and go thirty-five, so essentially, we're just hoping to ratify this and see if it can, what the board thought about it.
Just to go off with, you know, personnel, this bill goes past by Governor Baker's office, it's giving a lot of leverage down at the local government. So in specifically, within the town of Situate, there's over five hundred streets in this town, and thirty-seven of those five hundred are on our regulatory speed limits that have posted, you know, signs and things like that, so. That's gonna leave it with ninety percent of the roadways in town, they're gonna fall into this category, all your densely populated neighborhoods and, you know, school zones and things like that, so. You know, speed limits are a quality of life issue, and I think this is really gonna improve the quality of life for everybody, residents, residents, whether you're a voter in public or you live in that neighborhood, it's gonna greatly improve the safety of the roadway.
Right.
This, spoke with Chief Stewart and Deputy Chief Thompson about this in great detail over the past couple of weeks, and they're both in full support of this as well.
That was a question I had, is on a lot of the streets that aren't posted, how do we get that, sort of, you know, get that word out?
Right, so there's, I'll let Chris get into the signage, but there's, streets that don't have speed limit signs are statutory speed limits, so they're assumed to be thickly settled areas, if they're not otherwise posted as school zones and things like that. So the statutory speed limit right now, as it stands, is thirty miles per hour, and that's a steady street guideline. Within this Municipal Modernization Act, that, if the town does decide to opt-in to Chapter Ninety-Seventeen, we can drop that speed limit from thirty to twenty-five, and that's townwide.
Okay.
As far as signage goes, and notifying residents and things like that, I'll let Chris talk about that.
MassDOT states that all we'd have to do is basically put up, they actually have a design for the signs, I can give it out, but all the, all the roadways leading into Situate, so Sean and I were doing a quick count, there was like twelve. It's a little bit larger sign, but it would be basically telling you that, you know, this is the ordinance for this town, that it's now twenty-five for thickly settled areas.
Do they give us funding for that through this act? To repurchase all the signs?
It's allowing the local officials to make that decision.
It's allowing us to buy the signs.
They're so nice.
So those won't necessarily be everywhere, they'll be on the main roads coming into town, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, no, probably.
Right.
Yeah, MassDOT, for example, jurisdictional boundaries, so every roadway entering, entering the...
I just want you guys to think about something for a second, I think this came up some time ago, and Front Street, thirty miles an hour, right? Could you imagine going thirty miles an hour down Front Street?
Can't, I mean, it's dangerous.
Right.
It's crazy to do.
Right. But, but at the same time, we don't want to be grabbing everyone that's going, you know, just over it, so...
From an enforcement standpoint, you can always fall back on reasonable and proper, and that's like if you're traveling twenty miles an hour on Route Three A during a snowstorm, the speed limit's fifty, but, you know, twenty miles an hour, maybe too fast, you're gonna get stopped, you know what I mean?
Okay.
You know what I mean? So as far as, you know, just from an enforcement standpoint, you can always fall back on reasonable and proper. So if, you know, like I said, same thing with, take, you know, Vine Lab, for example. If schools in session, and cars are going up the road at 30 miles per hour prior to entering the designated school zone, that's, you know, in my opinion, and I'm sure everybody else is, way too fast.
Way too fast, yeah.
So, but opting into this and lowering that limit to 25, that'll also lower your threshold for reasonable and proper. So, you know, your threshold may be a little bit lower at 20, you know, since it's 25 miles per hour rather than at 30 miles per hour. So...
And Officer Billings, you'll work with the public and advise them that they're going too fast and that the law potentially has changed after our vote.
Absolutely. You're talking from experience?
As he always does. No, I watch him. He does a great job. He's on our busy intersection fight-off.
It wouldn't affect the state by all.
I think it's, that's what we hear a lot. People are always saying, people are going too fast, and, you know, in the neighborhood you see it. It's sound like being able to take advantage of this, move it down to 25, is, in my opinion, the best thing.
Yeah.
So it's a great opportunity that the Governor Baker administration had given us the opportunity to take advantage of it, so.
Just a question.
Anytime, man. Go right ahead.
Anne Burbine, Sandy Press Road, Situate. When you come out of the 20 mile an hour speed zone at the intersection of Ranch, Captain Pierce, I'm Robert Curtis, Countryway, there is no speed sign at all, and hasn't been there for years, and it should be 30. When you come out of North Situate Village onto Gannett Road, after you get through the village, there is no speed limit sign, and whoever it has been, 40. But my big premise here, and the reason for my bringing any of this up, is enforcement of a lack of law. They fly through North Situate, hell-bent for election, they come down Boot Hill Road, and someday you'll be reading about my shop and a big truck in the front. So everybody needs to slow down. However, there needs to be Gannett Road with a sign, Countryway with a sign, and everybody needs to produce some common sense, which left the building.
So I'm just trying to imagine the countryway, because if you're coming past Egypt...
From the library, heading toward North Situate.
It drops to 20?
Yes, and then there is no further sign until you hit North Situate Village, and it says...
There's a sign in front of, what's the name's house? Walker's House.
I don't think so. There's one of those, there's a new one that's flashing.
Yeah, but there used to be a sign.
Tells you how fast you're going. No, Sean, just take a look at that. Right, right. Crossing the garage, Egypt garage.
I know exactly when I can speed up again.
20's too slow.
And there's no sign on Gannett Road outside the village, and there is no sign on Gannett Road heading up to North Situate Village after the 35 mile an hour.
Right by the, right by where the river crosses underneath, there is that one. Oh, there is. There's that brand new one we just put.
Yes, you did, heading to the beach.
That's correct, right.
But not coming the other way.
Oh.
I travel the road a lot.
Sounds like we should have a subcommittee, and you should be on it, to go out and find all the signs that we need to put up here. I'm nominating you to do it. I was...
Martha Coats Street, Coats Street, one reason I attended some of the meetings previously with Chris and Officer Billings is that one neighborhood that we really benefit from this is that the Cushing School neighborhood, which a lot of you call Arbor Way in the States. There is a four-way stop at Arbor Way and Aberdeen at least 10 times a day. Flying down the hill from Mr. Orinberger's house, continuous straight shot. No, no, not in the car. Well, the problem is, at the top of the hill, I think it's just human nature. You accelerate, you go, and then you just keep going. As Burbine was mentioning, that's a T-shaped junction where that street ends into Countryway. It's a miracle nobody's gone into the home that's there. The other situation that's difficult in that neighborhood is at the corner of Aberdeen and Acorn, which is a T-shaped junction that leads directly to the school. It should be a school zone. It should be a safety zone. Nothing's posted. So right now, we see frequently teachers, parents, school buses, milk delivery trucks, you name it, far exceeding the supposed, again, constitutional 30. There was a day, a few months ago, when there was a police officer on a detail who stopped a car, and a parent on his way to school with his child in the car yelled at the police officer and said, "I'm not going too fast. What's your badge number? What's your name?" And that is the attitude that we face in the neighborhood among people who believe that it's their right to drive any speed they want because it's not posted. So that's just one neighborhood as an example. There are lots of other neighborhoods like that. We just kind of are in a funny place because the only sign says 20. That sign's more than 30 years old, and I guess it's not actually official. So people in the neighborhood collected money and posted, make your own sign that said, "Drive like your kids live here." Well, that's not even grammatically correct, so let's not go there, but nobody obeys that. So what this could do, if we could put a little money in Chris's budget, is to actually get some legal signs at all four elementary schools, because it's not just us. I mean, today, I left Longmont Park, and there's a police officer stationed there in order to make sure people go slowly at dismissal time. Cushing doesn't have the luxury of a police officer stationed. So at the very least, we need signs that have the accurate speed limit posted, which again, put some teeth into the law, because as Burbine said, this gets down to enforcement. And the police officer that day, for instance, could've said, "Oh, yeah, I'll give you my name, it'll be on your ticket, pull over." But he couldn't even do anything because there was no official sign to back him up. So we'd love to see this, all over town. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Darren Campbell, 57 Acorn. I live in the neighborhood as well. I have 40 children, aged 2 to 9, and fortunately, my property has lost a school. My kids walk through the woods. I would not probably feel comfortable letting them walk through the roadway, because as mentioned, you know, very small residential neighborhood with no sidewalks and school. So I truly support the measure. I also wanted to read on behalf of someone who's unable to be here, Suzanne, she had prepared Chantel Keller, her of 35 Aberdeen Drive. If I may, my husband, son, and I have lived at 35 Aberdeen Drive for seven years now. We moved to the neighborhood for several reasons, not the least of which was the proximity to both the high school and Cushing Elementary School. I envisioned our son walking to each school and enjoying riding his bike whenever he wanted, but who did I know? He would literally be taking his life into his own hands by doing so. He's had several close calls with drivers speeding in Aberdeen to drop off or pick up the children. His safety issue is exacerbated by the fact that there are no sidewalks. I also noticed that when Cushing changes afternoon pickup approach for parents, drivers are speeding down the road at an even higher rate to secure a, quote-unquote, "good spot" in the pickup line. And when they're soggy and on Saturday mornings at Cushing during the fall, our section at Aberdeen becomes a speedway from 8 until noon. I truly hope it does not take a tragedy for us to enforce a 20 mile per hour speed limit in this busy neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes?
Hi, my name's Bethany Cameron from 8 Vine Lab, and I'm also with the Jenkins School Council, and in the Vine Lab, named Good Group. We've been working with Traffic Rules and Regulations for the last two years now, and we've been here a couple of times as well. I just wanted to find out, Taylor, what is the next step for Desi Dines' safety challenge?
So the town needs to make a decision whether or not to opt-in to 90-17(c). And if that is the case, we're splitting this up into two tiers. So Tier 1 is going to be dropping the thickly settled speed limit from 30 down to 25 miles per hour. Once that happens, and the public's notified of it, word gets out, we will then attack that. So at that point, we'll have to go through the process again with traffic rules, and then come up, come up to those second meeting. One thing that Mass. Art has not come up with yet is any parameters other than, you know, a couple of just very vague ones, you know, SB and some of the, you know, playground and, you know, things that Chris was reading earlier. So we are waiting for some more guidance on that, because this is fairly new. So what, at that point, you know, we'll cross the bridge when we get to it, but right now, the town needs to make a decision whether or not to opt-in to 90-17(c).
Anybody else? Yes?
I'm Jen Dagan, over at 65 Combs Street, and I'll just add to what Bethany said. I'm also on the Jenkins School Council as the community rep. And so just if it helps to hear more positive support for this, we have been working for several years on trying to do things that would improve safety for kids coming to and from school around the Jenkins area. And by coming to a lot of the traffic rules and regulations, we need to talk about ideas. That's when we encountered the Cushing group that's also already spoken tonight about it and, you know, collaborated together, that this would really be a great idea for all of the school areas and really the town in general. So there's definitely support for it on our end, and I know we presented it to traffic rules, and hopefully it's made it to you all, but both groups wrote letters of support and got signed petitions by neighborhood residents in support as well, so.
Thank you. Yes?
Joanna Brand, 113 Arbor Way. I just wanted to also support this. I live down the other end of Arthur Park, so my kids are only 18 months and almost five, so when they are getting into school, I don't know if you're familiar with, but there's that kind of blind curve. Just taking my kids for walks can be quite scary to come around that corner with the cars flying, so I think this would be a huge advantage to, you know, the families and the neighborhoods. A very young neighborhood. There's been quite a bit of turnover and a lot of young families now, so I think this is something that would be very, very good.
Okay. Yes, Sean. Taylor, having just listened to the different groups around the schools, can you put up that, you know, sign in those areas? Just to, I think that works for a little, you know, let people know how fast they're going in these neighborhoods, and then, you know, if nothing else, if it continues, then maybe write some tickets.
We will put the one we have out, and as a matter of fact, a couple of days ago, we just took delivery of the new trailer. It's also incorporated a message board. The Marley Foundation donated a few weeks back. We just took delivery of that, and then once that's up and going, we can have both of them out.
Great.
Designated areas.
Because I think people may not be aware that they're going as fast as they ask, you know, sometimes, in the benefit of the town.
Right. One girl in the back. Anybody else?
Yeah, Steve Wodrowski, 119 Haveli. So I would just love it that we would be able to do 25 everywhere, including Haveli. That be the only road that was not, would not be 25, then probably in the 500 silver roads. So right now, 40, 45 is the median speed that I see, especially coming out of Turner and going past hopefully new development on, but through that whole area is just a speedway coming out of the light.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Suzanne O'Brien, 8 Vine, Burner Circle. We have three young children living in the Cushing neighborhood, and just wanted to emphasize how much I believe it's important to opt-in and gives the town some more options. As someone mentioned, there's a lot of young families in our neighborhood, as there's a lot of turnover right now, and the safety of our children is really paramount, and it's mind-boggling to, you know, get the kids to school and get them back to see how dangerous it could be with no sidewalks and thickly settled neighborhood with no signs posted about any, what, how fast the cars are supposed to be going. It's hard to enforce what you're not telling them to do. So, you know, we've talked a lot about even speed bumps, or, you know, signs, or school signs, better painted than sidewalks. There's a lot that could be done, but the town is looking into it.
Thank you. I will say, that's something, I know Sean, you're here, Kevin's not, but speed tables of some sort, we've talked about in the past, I think Alan, Sean, Kevin had said speed bumps are not the way to go, but I'm like, I think we as a town need to think about with the roads, some of them, because for the simple reason that people are gonna speed, regardless of the signs or not. But if you had speed tables, slows it down. And I'm like, in the certain neighborhoods, I'm like Aberdeen in particular, I could see people have spa, you know, they do it. And so I'm like, different other streets, we should think about as we redo the streets, speed bumps. And the other thing that you referenced that we need to think about is, going back to our sidewalk report that we did like 10 years ago, a lot of the various areas in town that really need sidewalks, I don't think it's been updated. And you mentioned Aberdeen's a prime maybe location, or maybe if it's not Aberdeen, what's the one that cuts across? Is it Acorn or something? In other words, if people are gonna go down Aberdeen, at least then you get another street or something with sidewalks, because I'm like, they should be able to go to school in safety. But that's something, at least with speed tables, I think we should, at some point, talk about that, you know, what can we do as a town going forward? I love speed bumps.
Yeah, there are a few on the South Shore that I know, I think we talked about.
And actually, yeah.
And see how they're handled.
Actually, we do, because I drove through and I actually meant to call Kevin, because they had speed bumps. And I'm like, they have them down here on the South Shore. We should consider it.
Both or tables?
Both. Both.
I like the table.
I know the plows probably won't.
That's...
Plow, I mean, just an issue that we gotta think about for safety purposes, that's all. Anybody else have anything?
Motion?
Please.
Motion to have the Engineering Department install the appropriate signage reflecting the speed limit change and have the town of Situate traffic schedule reflect the statutory speed limit of 25 miles per hour in thickly settled and business districts. Second.
Secondly, Mr. Harris. Do we have to adopt it?
Yeah, do we have to adopt the Chapter 90? That was my question, too. No, the motion. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was reading, I was reading, sorry, I wasn't reading it. It said, yes, you have to adopt it. There's a long process for that.
We need to adopt it.
Okay. And further, for the town of Situate to opt-in to Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c). Second.
Secondly, Mr. Harris. Any further discussion?
Do you need to also include the 20 mile safety zone in that, or is that just, is that considered part of it?
That's incorporated within 90-17(c).
Okay.
Right now, that's, Sections 193, 194 are covered within that. So both rules are gonna be included.
Mr. Harris, will we move to that point? Is there support from the board for the 20 mile? Oh, sure.
You're not gonna see any, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with that. I mean, school zones, anything, parks, beaches, I mean, anything, so that people are gonna be walking, slow down. People drive way too fast. Taylor and I have had many discussions, and it's, yeah, you'll have plenty of support. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
You down, Miss?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. First time he's been before us, I think. I know, yeah, yeah. Yeah. What are we doing next? Bill Armagh, I guess, yeah.
Sorry for the delay.
That's not, no, yeah, that's... That's something different, just, that's something different. That's different. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's the... Oh, yeah, sure.
Gotta be in the hat suit.
I don't know if I like this spot.
Where's the best place for board? Probably there, is it?
Can you get that on TV?
Yeah.
Maggie, can you get that?
Oh, not this one.
They can't get that one.
Oh. Can you turn it, face that camera over there? No, that's all right. Yeah, we...
Is there a problem in that camera?
I guess so, yeah.
I think so. Is that good?
How's your view, John? John, do you see it? Do you see it really well?
It's all black. That's all right.
Come over here, John.
We've got, I'll leave it for the public. They can see it, that's all right. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Bill Armagh. I'm here, thank you for having us tonight. I'm here tonight with Dave Bauer, usual president of Toll Brothers, also with Dave Buckley, and also I have Kevin Klein, our engineer. And finally, at the outset, the seaside of Situate, which Dave's gonna go over and explain, he's quite excited about it, the residential development, primarily is townhouses for 55 and over age restricted active out-of-community. There's a lot of things we're already scheduling. We're gonna have a public informational meeting at the Barketown Function Hall on April 20th. And after this meeting, after talking to Slockman about this, we're gonna move forward very quickly with filings with Conservation Planning Board and get into that whole process with the town consultant. So this, this junction, I'll let Dave tell us a little bit about the project.
Hi, everybody. It's been a couple of years, I think. I didn't scratch down the timeline, but I wanna say it has been a couple of years since we were, we were in the first time. David Bauer, I'm a resident of Westford, Massachusetts. I'm the Division President for Toll Brothers Massachusetts Division, and we've been in contract to purchase the property now for a few years. It's been a long slog of understanding the property, analyzing the engineering challenges, and there are a number of them. And I'm excited to say that where our experience brought us from a market point of view is we recognize the demand for housing for the aging population from the local area, and we happen to have a lot of experience in the 55 and over concept in New England, where we're really finding a ton of pent-up demand for this type of concept. And it happened to work with some of the engineering issues we were trying to overcome with stormwater, with the use of the property, the topography, grading, things like that, where we had previously shown you a 90-home, single-family concept... of the engineering issues we were trying to overcome with stormwater, with the use of the property, the topography, grading, things like that, where we had previously shown you a 90-home, single-family concept, four-bedroom, typical family-style neighborhood. Without boring you with the details, where we landed is with this 142-unit active adult 55 and over concept with 10 single-family homes on the perimeter of the property and on the east side of Haveli Road. So I can certainly answer any questions you might have about the concept, about what the 55 and over concept means, the condominium arrangement, the association which we would set up and manage, and then turn over to the residents to self-govern. I can answer any of those questions about what the community is expected to be, clubhouse, pool, amenities, that sort of a thing. But happy to be back and excited to get started. And we think we've got a really good concept here that, you know, we're happy about and we think we're hoping the town will view as, as a real improvement from where we were, because it, it does offer the housing for the aging population, but also it, it doesn't bring schoolkids to the neighborhood. We're self-imposing an age restriction here, you know, so not only are we not burdening the schools, but we're bringing a net tax surplus to the town from the community. So I'll answer any questions you might have.
What else?
Sure. We also brought some images of the products. First one here is the, the townhome, typical townhome building. And it's, the images are a little bit small, but as we go through the process, we'll have many more graphics to show you. But this is a typical.
Slide down.
We've got some floor plans, two- and three-bedroom townhomes. All of them are first-floor master bedrooms. And the, all the floor plans are really geared towards single-level living with the, the homebuyer able to choose whether or not they want a second level or not. And we do see a lot of homebuyers, regardless of their age and regardless of the fact that they're empty nesters, they do look for maybe a second floor with a loft and a guest bedroom or a finished basement potentially for their adult children to visit, or for a college kid to come home for a few months. So we, we have anything from a 1,600-square-foot ranch unit, single-level townhome unit, to a 26 to 2800 square-foot two-story home. Again, two- and three-bedroom units, these all are.
It'll be a mixture of both?
It'll be whatever the customer selects. So we, we have several different floor plans and sizes that we offer. And then the customers come in and they choose which one they want. And we, they're all interchangeable. So we'll let the, the market tell us what they'd like to see.
Could you share a little bit of information about the housing market in the South Shore and what made you move to this model? Because I found that really interesting. And I think it would be helpful for folks in the room to hear.
Sure. And I would not say it's a South Shore-specific issue that we picked up on, but I think all of us have heard about the baby boomers entering into that, that empty nester phase and looking to downsize, looking to get away from maintaining their property. And there, you know, we have seen all over New England a real shortage of not just single-level living, but also places where there's really a comprehensive lifestyle, meaning a clubhouse to go make new friends now that your network maybe has evaporated a little bit as all the kids go off to college, that, that your social life, and my, I have three kids under the age of 12, and my entire social life is about the kids and the sports connections and everything. And the empty nesters, not only do they want to get away from the maintenance, but they, they're looking for a new phase socially. So we often hear that down in Florida, where we do a lot of business, New Englanders go down there and they keep saying to us, why don't we, why won't you do this up in New England? Because we don't want to leave our homes. We want to have this lifestyle back home. So we have had great success over the past several years with this concept in places like Bolton, Methuen, down at the Pine Hills, we're doing really, we've built 90 homes and have another 120 that we're working on right now, all geared towards first-floor living and the lifestyle that the Pine Hills offers. So it's not specifically a South Shore market that we're picking up on, but there are some areas within New England where we really see strong pent-up demand. And our analysis of situat in the South Shore area does seem to be a lack of supply for this concept. And I have had two brokers in the past week call my office wanting to know, because they've heard somehow, and I don't know how they heard, but they've heard that this might be coming, and they have clients that they, they want to bring because they can't find something like that. So we're, we're excited about, about that for this area.
Thank you.
Your proposal, does it just, is it within Tilden, Turner, and Haveli? Or did it the first, or did it go on the other side of Haveli Road? And is this your first phase? Or is this all of it? Does that look like it?
This is the entire project here, and it's the same footprint that was there before.
Okay.
So on the east side of Haveli, we have the nine homes that you see there, the single-family homes that are not part of the 55 and over concept. Those are very similar to what was there before. On the west side of Haveli, that, that dark green property is the same property that you saw last time.
Right. Okay.
Where's the 10th home? Did it, is that just taken out, or?
It's up there off of.
Oh, there it is.
Is that off Longley?
Thank you. Okay.
One of the things in relation to the project is it's part of all the land on this. Also, look at the east side of Haveli Road, see the light green? Also included in this parcel is all the way down to the road, and also on the seaside of that road. One of the things when we get into the planning board and conservation processes, that is, that is land that, you know, we want to talk to the town. And if it's something, particularly on the ocean side, I know that after storms, the staging areas and all that, and that's something that the Toll Brothers are willing to work with the town. If the town wants to own that property, they can own that. Similarly, there's a lot of more, very scenic more that rolls down to there, which is a pretty big acreage outside of that. Again, it's something that if the town is situat would like to own that, if Toll Brothers are mental, it might be a nice open space amenity or to be used for some other thing. Mara, one of the questions, just to clarify what you said, is the mixture of, of the townhomes, is 116 would be two-bedroom, and 26 would be three-bedroom. So largely jarred with two-bedroom, two-bedroom homes. Because one of the things that we were, as we had two years ago, we slightly improved both the sewer flow and in the handouts which we had, in the water that was necessary for the development. Actually, what we are, what we're proposing here is actually 10 fewer bedrooms that was previously improved. And also the sewer flow, which Kevin has confidence calculated, is, is significantly less. Even if, and as you see in this, in some communities that they've already approved, they don't attribute sewer flow to the, to the clubhouse for the reason that it's just used for the residents. But even factoring that in, it's still less than what this has. And with the $1.26 million, which Toll Brothers are going to pay despite we have to build all the water and construction themselves, the INI work that can be done, just as, which I know in this report, but for the audience, not only provides the sewage for this project, but also substantially increases the amount that's available to other residents. So in no manner, as in two years ago, this does not bump anyone or move anyone in prioritization. In fact, it actually helps the situation in act, and also actually, in addition to actually using less sewer flow and water than the prior proof development, this also has a very minimal impact on our schools. And as Dave said, I think the rest of the city is a tremendous development opportunity here.
I can't tell from the plan, but is it linked from Turner, the access from Turner Road, sorry, from Tilden? Does that connect so that it goes all the way through the development? Or are they two, two points of accesses and then on link?
There's a secondary rear entrance off Tilden.
Yeah, so you go up there and then.
And you get to Haveli, but that's all. You can't get to Turner?
Nope.
Right, okay.
You can get to Haveli.
To Haveli, right.
With the land up in the left-hand corner, it's, seems like green space. Is that wetlands? Next to the Wampatack School? Or is that just, keep going to the left, right there? Yeah, what's that?
That is a wetland.
That's all wetlands.
Where's the school? Below that?
Yeah, it's a whole.
So it's right by everything else? I didn't know the priority wrapped around there.
It's hard to see what they're going.
So there wouldn't be any intrusion into Irvine or something? I think before, you had it coming up.
It's actually an improvement to the plan, because previously we were, we were using Irvine to access a grouping of single-family homes. And the connection we show here is just an emergency-only connection for the fire department. So that would not be a full-time access point.
In the clubhouse, is that down below?
It's supposed to be.
Right there, okay. Looks like a pool right next to it. Is that?
Yep, pool in the rear of the clubhouse.
And will part of your process be to clean up that entire front ditch along Haveli?
We're planning on it. At least I think I've seen a refrigerator and.
There's a lot of things in there. Yeah. I mean, I for one am really happy to see that you moved to a 55-plus, and that it has less of an impact than what was already approved by us previously. I think, I think this is a, fits a big need in our town. So I'm happy to see that it changed from 90, $700,000 homes to this.
I have to agree.
Just from our conversation earlier, you probably were in here sitting on it. I hope there's the plan to have sidewalks then going down on the internal portion of it, because as you can hear from Aberdeen, you know, neighborhood, Bill, your neighborhood, there's no sidewalks. There should be. People are going to use it to gain access from either side at some point, I presume.
That would be discussed at planning and all that, and all that sort of stuff.
I can't imagine if it's a 55 and over, creating a wave of sidewalks.
Right.
Certainly, at least on one side.
You said the average house value, townhouse value would be 560. What's the low end and high end of that? Because you said folks get to choose which model.
Yep. So the smaller unit, the ranch, the smaller ranch unit I mentioned would be somewhere in the high fours. I don't know exactly what that number would be. And then the up-end is really hard to, hard to predict, to wherever the customer looks to take it.
And what do you expect the timetable would be for full build, though? Do you have any kind of range for that?
We, we have our own best estimate when we run our pro formas to try and figure out, you know, what makes sense. And where, where, and I always knock on something when I say this, because it really is speculation, but we're hoping about 30 homes a year for, for selling and building.
Five to six years, maybe?
And we, we're not spec builders. We don't go out and, and build attractive housing and then just hope that it sells. We really build to suit each customer's desires. That's why you'll notice as we go through the process, the footprint of our homes actually captures a composite of all the different styles we offer, so that we have an approval at the end of the day that allows a customer to come in and pick any options or features, or they could do the small ranch or the larger two-story unit. And we can satisfy that need, and we have our, you know, approval to be able to build whatever footprint they choose.
Yes, ma'am.
Anne O'Brien at 5 Turner Road. And I was wondering, are there any more wetlands among the butter, Turner and Tilden? Are there any more wetlands that you can show us?
I don't think we have the wetlands. We, they're lightly shown on the plan, but that, that's a pretty extensive presentation that we would make at the Conservation Commission. We did have, go through the ANDR process where with the Conservation Commission, they have approved our delineation of the wetlands. So we know exactly where they are. They've all been located. And then when we present to the Conservation Commission, that will be clearly showing where those wetlands are, where the buffers are, how does our grading, you know, impact those buffers or stay away from those buffers. So that'll be a pretty extensive process.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Yes, sir.
Bill Schmidt, 33, Egypt Beach Road. Need to note that I'm speaking as a private, private citizen. Okay. I'm kind of dismayed here that we were talking about 90 houses, and now we're talking about 142 plus 10. Is that right? Or is 142 inclusive of the 10?
142.
142 and 10. So we were at 90, and now we're at 142 and plus 10, so let's call it 152. But that's going to be less sewage. I don't know how that number worked. I don't know how that makes any sense to anybody at all.
Bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
If we don't know how many bedrooms that we're building, how do we know that it's going to be less bedrooms?
No, we do. We do. We know there's a certain amount of two-bedrooms, a certain amount of three-bedrooms. And there's a full calculation this gentleman has here, so.
I don't know how we can do full calculation if we don't know how many bedrooms are going to be built.
Yeah, we do.
Because we're going to build in order. No, what they say to build is it's going to be 116 two-bedroom units and 26 three-bedroom units. Why, I mean, we've been talking about this for two years. What all of a sudden happens that made, I mean, the market didn't just shift overnight? Why did this change after all the permits were granted? And that, that's part one of the question. Part two, are we going to go through another permitting process with new plans? Well, the first thing, I just speak to that for a minute, Bill, is that we don't, we haven't, we don't have any permits from the planning board yet. And we do not have permits from the Conservation Commission. Do you have sewer? Say again?
Yes, we don't.
Is that going to stay the same?
Yes, it is.
Is water?
Yes, it is.
So, so I think part of the discussion is the board approved a development concept with 90 homes for sewer. So I think one of the reasons you're here tonight is that it's changed, even though the net anticipated sewer use is less.
Correct.
But that, you know, that's, you know, sort of why they're here for the board to update, because, you know, your original conversations with folks was for sewer capacity, given the constraints we have. And what's represented here is correct in terms of the stuff we talked about in 2014, in 2015. But again, you're just building something different. The sewer's the sewer, even a little less. So just to bring everybody up to speed.
And actually, with the, with the difference number, you have actually an additional $400,000 in water fees.
And just to do the math, Bill, it's about 350 bedrooms in this plan compared to 360. So that's less.
Do you not think that this is something that we had told the people that are living around there, that we were going to do one thing, and now it's completely different?
I don't think they've gone.
Do you not think that that's, that's something to be concerned about?
Well, Bill, we are.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, from my perspective, Bill, they haven't gone to, in front of any boards yet. So they still have to go through all the permitting processes, all the public hearings, everything. So they're just coming to us to update us on the change. So that, that process still would have had to take place regardless of where we are today.
So when we, when we came with the 90-unit plan, we did a neighborhood meeting where we invited all the local neighbors to hear about the project, and we gave an overview at that time. We have a new meeting scheduled for April 20th, same exact concept. We want to invite anybody who's interested to that. We're going to send out invitations to all of those folks that would be on the butter's notice list, and then we'll, we'll get the invitation to town hall and ask that it be distributed to anybody that's interested. Again, the goal is to, to now say, here's where we are today, and this is what we're going to be initiating with the planning board and the Conservation Commission.
Sean? And I remember attending that meeting, and there were quite a few residents there and asked a lot of questions. You provide a lot of answers. Bill, I, I kind of like this, you know, piggybacking on what Mara just said. And not to, you know, scare anyone or anything, but you have, what, 50 or 60 acres, Bill, right? 50 or 60 acres?
70.
70 acres. 150, 162 units. What could it be, Bill? 40B? What, how many bedrooms could we be looking at if it was a 40? What, how many bedrooms could we be looking at if it was a 40B? And I'm not saying that just, you know.
Multi-project was, was it 200 maybe, do you know what I'm saying?
250.
250. I didn't. And most of the stuff in south of Hatherley is wetland.
I think a lot more could be built than 162 and, you know.
That's what we said when we were talking about the 90. Now it's almost doubled.
Anne?
Amber White, Penrose Road. I have to respectfully disagree with the board in terms of 55 and older. I find 55 and older some of the spermatoids. I think that the viability of the town, its energy, comes from young people and young families. And that it's really truly important to keep a miss, young and old, together. And there is a definite need in this town to two-bedroom homes in the 350 to 425 range for young people starting out as couples, have the first baby and then move on. 55 and older, we have it up on Doctor's Hill, you have it down Pine Hills. You look at Hall and the apartment houses, all 55 and older. And someone said to me 20 years ago, and now it's probably 25, there were 1,200 students at Hall High School. Now there are 1,200 students system-wide. We need young people. We need young families in order for this town to not necessarily grow population-wise, but to have the necessary energy to keep everything going. The other thing I think the board needs to think about, it's not just the infrastructure of sewer and water. It is also the infrastructure of public safety. Fire Department, Police Department, that type of thing for a massive housing. Where are these people going to, where will our first responders come from and who will pay them off? And yes, we can talk about tax dollars and maybe it will be revenue neutral. I don't know. But it's just food for thought. That's all. Food for thought.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just one observation I'd make is, and it's getting to his point, we're going to go through, this is why we're going through the process of all the town boards, but that just, but to speak to one issue on 55 and older housing, I happen to be serving on the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. There's a there's a committee on economic development through housing. Statistically, what's happening in this 24-town region here, by the year 2030, there's going to be a million people who are going to retire from the workforce. Now, they project the workforce is going to probably go up 15 to 20 percent. But even assuming it's a million, what the issue is, is 800,000 workers are not moving. There's a deficit of housing for 800,000 workers. And one of the integral components of that is empty nesters. Is because if you do not have a place for empty nesters to move out of their three- or four-bedroom homes, the people who have young children, working ages, do not have a home they can purchase. And so one of the, all the studies show amongst other things, 55 and older housing for empty nesters is a critically important part for economic development to allow families of working age to have a place for their children to live.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I ask one follow-up question, please? And I thank the board and these gentlemen for their time. What is the impact of property values? One of the discussions that we had when we were talking about 90 houses at $700,000, that has an obvious impact. So what is the impact of more densely populated townhouses on the surrounding property values?
My answer, well, I didn't come prepared to give you numbers, but what I what I could provide is a lot of experience and a track record of communities just like this, in neighborhoods just like this, where the values have either stayed constant or they've risen. And I could pretty confident I could substantiate that because we typically bring higher-end product to the market and spend money in places that maybe not every developer does, like the clubhouse, the pool, the landscaped entrance, those types of things. And also addressing a property that is wisely considered to need to need in cleanup, and we talked about that tonight, that I think we could substantiate that it would it would be an improvement to the values. I just don't have that data.
Yeah, but certainly it would not be the same as what we originally proposed.
It's it's hard to quantify that. I think I could argue, being in the business and the marketing business, that a community that is, you know, planned and landscaped and considered high-end, whether it be single-family homes worth 800,000 or townhomes worth 500,000, I think you're still, the most impactful thing is that you're taking a property that is in distress, at least visibly, and you're turning it into something that's considered an improvement. Again, I can't quantify it for you. And it's also a matter of opinion. So there may be others out there with a different opinion, but.
Well, in talking about the improvement process, given the fact that you build, for lack of a better expression, to order, there, this is going to be a prolonged timeframe where heavy construction going on for a long.
Five years, we said, approximately?
Well, that, you know, we we estimate five years. I guess my answer would be that there are trade-offs to consider. The alternative could be, and we saw this during the recession, that the builders that spec build and go put in a mile of road before they have the sale, some of them don't make it, and you end up with projects that are half-built. And that's a that's a real problem. We're conservative. We're careful. We want to do one section at a time and make sure we can finish it and occupy it and it'll be a living section in the neighborhood. So it's it's our business model. It's not not everybody's, but that's ours. And we think it's it sets us up in a better position to know that we're going to deliver that at the end of the day, that we're going to deliver what we've got permitted for.
Yes, sir.
Ben Moore, C99, First Petro. It's been discussed, actually today earlier, we're talking about the different part of meeting you guys are here about a new position that's proposed in town and in many other town meetings that I've been at recently, that this town right now is kind of suffering from a land shortage in terms of the amount of development that's going on and that land is at a premium. One thing I'd like, this is just, I'd just like to note this quote to the people of the town, the board, and as well as the developers that are here tonight, that this site is very unique because it's in the residential cluster overlay district in our zoning map. And that overlay district is only compromises a very small portion of the town. It's one zone. And this site takes up a very large percentage of that zone. So I just want to point that out that how this site is developed means a lot to the people that live here and it will have implications in terms of the long-term planning involvement of the community being that it is such a large portion of that overlay district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more, Mr. Chair, Selectman Zaniani couldn't be here tonight. He's traveling out of state. But he did want to ask one question. Is when you first appeared for us a couple of years ago, the board discussed the option for the sewer capacity with clearing up some fields on Wampatack and also bathrooms at Egypt Beach. Are those still under consideration and part of this?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to comment. That was his only question. Thank you.
Yeah, through the planning board process, we're going to discuss certain public amenities and try to get a try to get a feel of, you know, what's what's best for the town, what the town needs that fits within the budget for the project.
Good to know. Great. Thank you. Everybody else have anything?
One of the questions, Mr. Chairman, would like, in order for us, because we're ready to file with all this, you know, I'd like to, if we could have the board approve, we already have the surge in the water, which is already approved, but what we need is approval of the board to change the concept of this development from 90 homes to 10 homes with 142 A restricted adult, active adult communities. So that's the vote that we need in order to, for us to file with all the other boards.
So the board's next meeting is April 18th and they can vote then? Is no vote on the agenda? And we're required by the open meeting law to have noticed a vote? So they can just have it as a new business item at their April 18th meeting, Bill? They can't vote it tonight because it just says update. Does that create any hardships for you for two weeks?
Well, I guess what the, little bit, because I guess what the question is, is one of the things from the selectmen, we're ready to file, but it was sent out $10,000 worth of postage and all, and a lot of other things. But but the only the only question I have, and I'm not trying to substitute judgment from town council, the vote to allow the sewage is already approved? That's what we're not asking for a vote at the capacity of sewer commissioners or water commissioners. All that we're asking is.
Change in the concept.
Change in the concept. That's all.
I mean, I think it's up to you, Mr. Chair, if you can give them reasonable assurance so that that will be a vote that's on the agenda so they can proceed. I just, I can't have you vote because it's not noticed on the agenda.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, the concept itself, to me, I think we have a need for 55-plus. I know some people may disagree with that, but I mean, my feeling is it's a it's a positive thing.
It's a point important, Mr. Chairman. I have to say, as a member of the planning board, I do not appreciate being assert. If you feel as board members that 55 and older is in your purview, I respectfully disagree.
That's okay.
I think it is something that needs to be vetted through the planning board, not through the Board of Selectmen. Let us deal with it, please. This is our, this is the planning board's job.
Then we, following along Ann's line, then we won't have to vote anything. It's not, it's not our purview to talk about 55, under 55. We, they got the sewer capacity really technically, to Bill's point, we probably don't have to revote this.
It's in an abundance of caution and also to be fully transparent that we're here.
Right, right.
But if it's a consensus of the board, just as long as from a board standpoint, from a protocol standpoint, we'd like, we would like to go ahead to hold our public meeting because we are going to set up notices for everyone. We would like to file with Conservation, file with Planning Board. But I just want to make sure, you know, if the board, the consensus is that we're good, then is that the, that's the day of the town meeting?
Yeah, I respect what you said, Anne, and I don't disagree to the extent that the board's purview is really relative to sewer capacity. I understand that. When we discussed this two years ago, it was for 90 units and so the board made a judgment based on 90 and that's been updated to 152. So that's the only thing they're really looking at.
But not 55 and older. They should not be looking at that as a board at all. In my opinion, it is not their purview.
And he just, I, you know, not for words as well, he just shared that with us. He's here just to, you know, this is just the beginning.
He doesn't vote on the concept of 55 and older, is that's what I heard.
No.
No, but I said, I said, I like the concept. It happens to be 55, they do, 55 and over was discussed. I said, I like it. It's my opinion. I'm entitled to my opinion. Yes, sir.
It's relative to sewer capacity. I think, yeah.
Well, but to that point, normally when we're voting on sewer or water capacity, we have the engineering specs certified. Have the new numbers been certified by?
I'll let Mr. Onberger answer that. Hold on.
Devin?
Yes, we looked at all the numbers, looked at the uses, bedrooms, and I prepared a memo that was submitted dated March 22nd.
Now, I'm talking about an independent group to certify the new numbers.
Well, we just received these updated numbers from March 23rd, Bill. So we did that last, we did that two years ago, so we'll do the same.
So we're not going to vote on sewage tonight, then?
So the sewer, there is no vote on sewer. The sewer is approved two years ago.
But you have a different concept here. How can you, you have a different concept and different numbers.
No, we don't.
How can that?
No, we don't have. What the what the state, what the state requires and sewer commissioners require is that if there's a use of sewage, the board of selectmen, the sewer commissioners have to approve that and in turn the DEP also has to approve it. That has been done. The amount of sewage capacity is actually less, which I thought would be good news for most people, but.
110 gallons per bedroom. Number of bedrooms is down, so the gallons are down. Correct?
So we get back.
So can't we just give them a consensus or, you know, it's up to up to them if they want to proceed?
I mean, the purpose of this was to be updated, so you're on the current page from what was two years ago and that, you know, they want to make sure there was no concerns or red flags about granting the capacity for the sewer.
And the idea of what we're doing, they want to move on to planning, move on to conservation, move on to everybody.
Right. Absolutely.
So I would propose that we just accept the update and let them continue through their permitting and planning board process and review and make sure that all that is decided there. We don't know whether we take a vote.
No, we don't. We don't. We cannot.
It's a practical matter, considering some of the consternation from the from the audience here. I would invite on the 18th, if you will come, I would like, you know, a formal vote when it's been noticed, Tricia, so we can have that. And again, also, I think what's been lost a little bit in the thing here is, this is just the beginning of the process. Everything from Ann's standpoint, planning board, the prime mover of all the designs, all this, we've, the talks have already been arranged. It's costly and wicked through a long process and we asked a consulting firm that's going to look at everything for all the different boards and any issues will be addressed at to the satisfaction of all the conditions and that, whether it's conservation or whether it's planning or planning.
Great.
So with that, so we'll, on the 18th, we really appreciate your time and we really look forward to bringing this project.
Just have a question in the back.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Pat Galvin, Conservation Agent. I didn't know what the timing was on filing the notice of intent. It's going to be a month or so now. It'd be great to have you in for an informal discussion so that when you do file, any of the concerns that we had maybe could be addressed with your notice.
Pat, I'll give you a call tomorrow and see what you do, okay?
Okay.
Did you already meet informally with Development Review?
I thought you did.
Or was that somebody else? Did this project, Pat, already meet with DRT informally?
Not recently.
Okay. All right. I was, because, all right, it's something else. Okay.
I think we're good. All right. We're set for it. Thanks, guys.
Sewer betterment? No? Yeah, yeah, we have a sewer betterment. Differral. Would you like a motion? Yeah, yeah, just a deferral. Yeah, yeah.
Cross it out.
Right here. No, it's all right. Here, use mine.
Cross it out.
Yeah, no, no, you crossed off more than one. Just say we have that and then I'll give you a quick motion.
Okay, we have a discussion, a vote of a sewer betterment deferral parcel ID 14-1-49-0.
Motion. Move to grant a sewer betterment deferral for the current year taxes for parcel ID 14-1-49-0.
Second. Second, Mr. Daney. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, moving on to new business. We have to vote on the acceptance of a donation from Situate Health Services to the Situate Police Department.
Motion? Or you want a little backup?
Sure, just to put it.
All right, it's a motion. All right, I'll just read the motion, the short, the backup.
Can you say what it is?
Yeah. It's a donation that the Situate PD received on March 17th for 40 tourniquets from the Situate Health Services. And the motion will read as follows. Move the board of selectmen to accept a donation from Situate Health Services in the amount of $800 to the Situate Police Department for the purchase of tourniquets.
Second.
Second, my Ms. Curran. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote of a one-day liquor licenses.
I move to approve a one-day wine and malt license for tailor-made bartenders for bridal shower at the Situate Maritime Center on April 15th, 2017, from 1:00 in the afternoon until 4:00 PM.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
I further move to approve a one-day wine and malt license for tailor-made bartenders
Yes, we have, yeah, right. Second.
Second, Mr. Harris, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote of a board and committee appointment. Jack Whitaker, Democratic Town Committee.
Looking for the motion.
I'll see him here, but move to appoint Jack Whitaker as the Situate Democrat reelection warden for a term of one year or until a successor is named?
Second.
Second, Mr. Danahue, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we move on to other business? Do you have any correspondence?
No, we don't. No.
Wow. Do you have approvals of meeting minutes?
I'll move the Board of Selectmen approve the meeting minutes for March twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody have anything today?
And I do have one thing. You know, we're looking to maybe, you know, last year we had the Irish Republican Declaration of Independence, and some people have reached out saying they'd like to try to do it again. And one of the requests was whether or not the board would entertain maybe trying to invite the Irish Counselor to come to do it in about three weeks. So I was thinking if the board would be okay with it, I'd like to maybe draft a letter to send out to invite.
Is it East Horizon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the date?
It would be, I think it's the twenty-third, so it's coming up.
Of April?
April. It's a Sunday. So I don't know if that's okay, but I'd like to, if I can, send it out.
Yeah. That's great.
That's it for me.
Sean, you have anything?
Just one thing. We don't meet until the eighteenth, correct?
Right.
All right. And just the recreation, once again, is sponsoring their annual egg hunt at Widow's Walk from ten to eleven on the fifteenth. So, you know, it's been our last chance to mention that, and I think hundreds of little kids show up, if not a thousand. And it's just a, from what I hear, wonderful event. I'm a little beyond those years now, but nonetheless, wanted to mention it. That's all, Marty.
All right. Ma, do you have anything?
I don't. I'm good.
I just want to say that yesterday on opening day for the Red Sox, that the Council on Aging had a really nice time for a lot of the people in town, and my wife happened to be off and she went. They had a nice little lunch and they had the game on and stuff, and I guess it was really, really a nice time and a good take, so. So that's all I have.
That's nice.
Okay, so we are going to be, I'm going to move that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property,